Watkin County Council Meeting for June 5th, 2018. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Tim Baloo.
Here.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Rudd Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Sal Paul Sodou.
Here.
Do you all like to join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder, please turn off your cell phones, and if you'll be handing out any paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the Clerk up the front here for our office files. Just also as a reminder to the, if you look in the back of the first page of the agenda for tonight is the rules and procedures for which we conduct the council meetings, and I remind all council members to follow them, and I remind them to remind me to follow them too. First up, we have public hearings. Now, in the public hearings, audience members who have signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first and are asked to form a line behind the signs on either side of the chambers. If you are unable to sign up before the meeting, you'll be given an opportunity to address the council once you've gotten through all the folks listed on the hearing sheets. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time limits and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, we encourage the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group. So the first up is a public hearing, and it's an ordinance amending Watkin County Code 8.11 Solid Waste Recycling and Collection District and Watkin County Code 8.10 Solid Waste and Residential Recycling Collection regarding solid waste collection in Point Roberts. And do we have a staff report for this? Mr. Hedges.
Yes, thank you, Jeff Hedges, Watkin County Health Department. So I'm happy to provide just maybe a brief summary of the process and just a brief overview of the actual amendment for this agenda item. And back in 2016, we had our comprehensive solid and hazardous waste management plan approved, and in that plan, we had an action item to go up to Point Roberts and see how the solid waste system was doing up there. And the reason we did that is because we know that Point Roberts, you know, beautiful and fascinating as it is, has challenges to providing services. And when it comes to solid waste, they have lower economy of scale, higher operating costs, 75% seasonal occupancy rate, and these combined in 2009 actually to result in the loss of service provision up there when the company ceased to be economically viable. And at that time, the Utilities and Transportation Commission did a review and a final order since they are the regulatory authority for garbage collection, and they came up with some recommendations. And so we went up to Point Roberts in May of 2016 and started a dialogue with the community, and we worked with the Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee for two years. And initially, we got their input on how they wanted us to proceed, and they recommended that we start with a solid waste survey, which we did. It was an online survey. We had 314 responses, very comprehensive actually. We asked people about curbside collection, transfer station operations, and commercial operations, and we focused on five things: levels of service, costs of service, recycling, legal dumping, and vendor stability up there. And then for the next two years, that information was used in our discussions with the advisory committee and the community. And so throughout that process, it was really a standing agenda item at PRAK, the advisory committee, for that two years, and then it ended with an informational mailer to 2,300 property owners in Canada and the US and a town hall meeting that basically informed and discussed further the recommendations of the advisory committee. And so we are at the end of that two-year process now in a public hearing to consider the recommendations both of the committee and of staff. So given that process, what are the recommendations? And the recommendations have basically three aspects. And the first aspect of that is the concept of mandatory curbside collection. And just, we have a handout here, just a few pages of an excerpt from the UTC final order in 2010 where they talk about the lack of mandatory collection in Point Roberts as being a major reason for the failure of the company. And in our privatized solid waste system in Watkin County, we have a law that says that curbside collection is mandatory, but then we have a provision where anybody can get an exemption from that. So in Point Roberts, you know, we have lots of people that got exemptions, and with a customer base of only 300, the UTC was pointing out, as you can see on page two there, that there really was no economy of scale, and I'll just go ahead and read that first quote. "It is extremely challenging to develop a viable business plan when the county has granted so many exemptions for mandatory service." And then on the next page, I underlined it for you just to scan, they say, "Under the circumstances presented in the record of this proceeding, they find it difficult to determine whether any applicant is able to provide service in Point Roberts." And so really what's happening here is that, you know, in Watkin County, we have sanitary services company with 45,000 customers and Nookzack Valley disposal with 6,500 customers. They have good economy of scale, which allows for higher services and reduced costs, but in Point Roberts, Can Do Recycling and Disposal currently only has 300 customers. And in 2009, that's why the service provider went out of business. They had a truck fail on them, and they couldn't replace it, and that kind of started the ball rolling. So in our conversation with the advisory committee and the community, we focused on the concept of mandatory. And what's interesting, and it's the last page of the handout, we just provided, if you can see, in 2001, the community went through exactly the same process as we are now, and there was a lot of support for mandatory, but they did not do it. And as a consequence, the service provider did go out of business. So here we are again. But then that begs the question of if curbside collection service is mandatory, what is mandatory? And so with the advisory committee, who recommended mandatory, again, we had long discussions about what would a minimum level of service be. And the concept there would be that there would be a mandatory minimum level of service, and anything above that, then the vendor would just invoice you additionally for. And the, after lots of good discussion, the committee recommended that every other week collection of a 32-gallon garbage can with three bin recyclables would be the minimum level of service. That service currently costs about $17 a month to provide in Point Roberts. Okay? And as part of that ongoing discussion with the advisory committee, they asked us to look into how Canada does it in Vancouver and Delta, because that's where a lot of their seasonal residents are from. And as it turns out, the recommendations are modeled directly after that, after that system. They have mandatory with the minimum level of service, and they pay for it on their tax bill. So, but, so when we look at that minimum level of service, we have one more handout. Okay, I think he's already handed it out then.
Yeah, we got it.
So the language that you have is for the, very simply put, every other week collection of a 32-gallon can with three bins source-separated recyclables. The community, prior to our May 8th committee update that was canceled, and we didn't have a chance to talk about it, had requested that we add one thing to it, which we talked to the service provider, and they decided that they would be able to do it. And the community's calling that 26 variable. It's something that they really wanted. And simply put, in the blue language there, what that means is that, you know, if you have every other week collection, that's 26 pickups a year. But for people that are permanent residents on vacation, or for people who are seasonal residents, option now with 26 variables says that you can set those 26 pickups out any time of the year that you want. So if you are a seasonal resident and you're only there half the year, you can put out two cans, two 32-gallon cans every other week when you are there. If you're a permanent resident on vacation and you don't put a can out for a month, you can put out two cans the next month, both times. So this language is in the statute, which staff didn't, and legal did not see as necessary, but because the community wanted it in there, we are asking you today, as you consider approval, to base approval upon addition of that language. And that's something that, it's, it's a significant higher level of service for the community. What that means basically is what the service provider has to do is when they drive and they pick up cans and they pick up bins, they will have a tablet, a computer tablet with them, and they will actually take the trouble to track how many cans they're picking up each time from each location. It's a lot of extra work for a driver, and when you start combining that with other services like carry-out or drive-in, you know, currently the tariff says that for a dollar, they'll walk up to your house and get your can and bring it down to the truck, empty it, and then return it to the house. You know, they'll have to track that too. If you have a bag with a tag on it, because you did pre-purchase tags, they'll track that too. So the idea here is to go from 300 customer base to 2,300, which is still one-third of Nookzack Valley disposal, it's still not a lot, and be able to offer these higher levels of service and put downward pressure on pricing because of the economy of scale. So that's the, that's the second. And the third and final aspect of the amendment then is to put the fee for service on the tax bill, and that's what they do in Canada, and there was a lot of discussion about that. And so what we have here, you know, currently, if the UTC approved the $17 rate, that would be $17 times 12 on your tax bill, 200 bucks for a year of garbage pickup. And the county doesn't keep any of that money, it's not a tax, it's a fee for service, and putting it on the tax bill does two things. It reduces the administrative overhead of a small business operation, but also for the 75% of the residents that are Canadian and other, where you cannot do collections, it ensures that the payment for service is occurring. So given that, that would be the end of my summary.
All right. Mr. Buchanan.
So Jeff, when this gets billed, is it billed for, is it paid in advance, or is it, do you pay at the end of the year?
This will be paid on your, the $200 or so will be on your annual property tax bill, and the county will collect that and then give it to...
No, I understand that, but is that for your future garbage, or is that for your past year's garbage?
You'll pay in April. So, good question, thank you. So collection would begin January 1, 2019, and you would pay for it in April on your taxes.
Okay, so it's kind of not fully pre, but not after the fact?
You're not paying, you're not paying ahead of time, right?
April and September.
That's true.
Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I have a question for you. How many, and I would like the exact addresses, times have you gone to anybody's place who has an exemption to make sure they're following the rules?
Oh, zero. Zero. And so, you know, that's...
No, that's, you just answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Byrd.
I could have missed something, but is this, are we going to have public comment on this?
Yeah, yeah. I just needed to get an answer.
We just wanted to ask him questions.
I was going to, I was going to allow the dialogue with a staff member as part of his report, and then we're going to open it up to public comment. Any further comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions after public comment period.
I had two questions, if I may. One is, the rate is set, the rate that we're talking about is set by the Utilities Commission, correct?
Correct.
And that rate is subject to periodic review?
Correct. In this, in this case, the service provider would file a rate case with UTC to revise their tariff, and the UTC would do a full financial audit, and they would look at revenues and expenses, they would look at the demographics and the services to be provided, and then they would establish, you know, they, they would, as they regulate statewide, the businesses as investor-owned utilities with a fixed targeted rate of return, they would go ahead and say to the service provider, this is your rate for this service. And then in the tariff, which is a thick document, it would, in very strict, specific language, spell out what services are provided at what costs. And then in exchange for no competition, the service provider is held to that. They cannot do more or charge more.
So is it fair to say that if, after, let's say, a year's operation, and the Utilities Commission reviews the financial records, and they feel that the operator is making an unreasonable profit, that they would lower his...
In this case then, a follow-up financial audit would occur 12 to 16 months after the beginning of the service, to see how it was going.
Right. But if the rate was deemed to be too profitable, in other words, he was deemed to be making too good a thing out of this, then the, then the rate would go down?
The, currently, the service providers have to provide full financial information annually to the UTC, expenses and revenues, so they're monitored. The UTC regulates 54 such companies statewide.
Right. But my, my understanding is if they're making too much money, then the Utilities Commission adjusts the rate down.
They are the regulatory authority that oversees that.
Yep. Okay. With Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah, just one more for me. If someone moves during the course of the year, is that refundable?
If someone moves, the, it's, it's because it is a, because it's a fee on the tax bill, it's year-to-year. So if someone moving in, then mid-year, so actually, that's an escrow question, I think. Yep, your taxes, you know, when, how, what's going to happen here, there's going to be a contract between the county and the service provider made attachment to the tariff that will explain the details of how we collect and disperse money. And so in that, right, in the treasurer's office is where we will actually have answers to those detailed questions.
Okay. Mr. Buchanan, I think I can answer that. Is it, if the property is sold, there'd be a daily rate adjustment for all the property taxes that would be adjusted as of the date of the transfer of the title? So if you, assuming it was July 1, you, half the, half the cost would go to the person who owned the property, and half the, the seller and half the cost would be adjusted back to the buyer, so.
Like all the other tax items on the bill.
Mr. Sodou.
I have one quick question, Jeff, is that since there is only one candidate or businessperson who applied, how do you choose that? Does WUTC rate commission has some say in selecting people or qualifying, let me say that, qualifying the contractors in such a situation? And of course, county is responsible for the contracting. How does that work?
Qualifying is a good word. They do not select, they qualify. And in 2009, when we lost our service provider, we only had one applicant for the franchise, and that was Can Do Recycling and Disposal. And then the UTC final order, which you have excerpts from, is the document where they qualify that applicant, so they don't just award it to anybody.
Yeah, yeah. They qualify. So the person does get, have to qualify with that, with UTC?
Yes, oh yes, oh yes, yes. It's a rigorous process.
Okay, Mr. Byrd.
What is the actual, what is the annual fee for the 32, the actual fee?
Currently, the, the approved tariff rate for the minimum level of service that's proposed of every other week pickup of a 32-gallon can and source-separated recyclables is $16.13 plus tax.
That's a year?
That's per, that's per month.
Per month.
Per month.
$200.
Yeah, 200 bucks.
So...
So is it, is it fair to say that if we mandated this, that rate could easily go up and...
So that rate is eight years old and has not been adjusted at all, even for inflation. Had it been adjusted, it might be at 20 bucks now, but when we go, but that rate is based on 800, and he currently has 300 customers. So if we go up to 2,300, what we are, the reason we're doing that is to put downward pressure then from that inflation-adjusted potential price. When I, just in casual conversation, talked with the UTC about that, and it being at $17 now, there was an indication that it would go down from that level. Now, I qualify that simply by saying that it has to go through their process of review for them to establish a rate.
Let me ask you this. The, you said it's based off expenses.
Oh, the UTC's establishment of the rate?
Yeah.
Oh, expenses is one variable.
One variable. So when they look at that, the, how do they decide what is a valid expense?
In their expert opinion, you know, they're looking at personnel and training and insurance and equipment and fuel and all of the things that are necessary to provide solid waste collection, both to commercial and residential generators.
But do they actually go through each line item and, and look at each item, line item to make sure it's a legitimate, valid business expense?
When they establish the rate or in a financial audit?
When they establish the rate.
Yes, yes, in both actually, yes. You know, and again, this is, you know, these are lawyers and accountants and governor-appointed commissioners that do this statewide, and they do it in big cities like Seattle where it's, I'm sure, much more challenging to look at expenses and revenues and demographics.
Just to make sure we're on the same page, what I'm asking you is, they will go through the ledger for the company and look at every expense and what it was for and what the amount was for, and look and decide if that was a legitimate business expense versus a business owner spending money on...
Oh, yes.
Something else.
Yes, they will do that as part of the financial audit and a rate case tariff revision at the beginning of this, if this is approved, and then they will do it again at 12 to 16 months to see if they're on, on target with the fixed rate of return that they want for that company.
Is that true? Hey, you're the business owner, correct? Do they actually do that? Jeff, I'm not calling you a liar.
David Galatley.
But is that actually, they...
All right, sorry, please state your name.
You either know it or you don't.
My understanding is that they go through the line items when the budget is presented, and each item, as it relates to the regulated service, is vetted and gone through. And when they do the audit, they will do exactly the same thing.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Hedges, and we'll open up with the open public comment period. And first person on the list was Craig, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to call people down. Please line up on either side of the two podiums, and we'll take you in turn, alternating between one podium and the other. So Craig Grossman, Arthur Reber, Kristen Rock, Louise Cassidy, and Samantha Schofeld. Please proceed, and please state your name first.
Good evening. My name is Craig Grossman. I'm a resident of Point Roberts for over 13 years, and I'm here tonight to, as in, to endorse the, this, this...
Pull the mic down, too.
To endorse the solid waste proposal that's before you this evening, even though I don't agree with 100% of it frankly, I think it's been weakened significantly since it was originally proposed. I would first like to say, and I've stated at meetings in Point Roberts, I live in Point Roberts because of where it is, I enjoy our Canadian neighbors, I enjoy our access to Canada. I am, been a property owner and a business owner in Canada over the years, I'm a US citizen. But based on what I've heard and read in the last, in the last, the last several weeks since our last meeting, was a lot of, a lot of letters and statements, including from, from Commissioner Brenner, in relation to the opinions and feelings of those Canadian property owners in Point Roberts. The major opposition to this, from what I've heard and what I've read, seems to be from part-time vacation owners, mainly Canadian owners coming down to Point Roberts, and from one other major proponent who I've known for many years, Kenny Calder, who, who is a nice guy, and I, and I like Kenny, but certainly seems to me to be, have a major conflict in this whole argument. Point Roberts needs this garbage service, the permanent residents and voters of Point Roberts need this service. Okay? We, we have, we have random dumping, we have random burning, we, we live in an environmentally sensitive place, and we, we, it's a free-for-all right now. So I would ask that the county council remembers that, that they were voted in office by the voters of Point Roberts, of which there's less than 1,000, and that they're answerable to the voters of Point Roberts and the citizens of the United States, those who are too young to vote, and those are unable or unwilling to vote for one reason or another. So I am, this, this, please take this as an endorsement for this, and to pay attention to the, to the people that are voting you guys into, into office. Okay? Thank you for your time.
If you, if your, if your name is called up, please line up, please do not sit in the seats and wait for the next person, it'll just take a lot longer. So I'm looking for Arthur Reber, Kristen Rock, Louise Cassidy, and Samantha Schofeld, and then Kimberly Butts.
Yeah, hi, I'm Arthur Reber. I'm also a full-time resident of Point Roberts and...
All this close.
And I am also in support of the proposal. Just a couple of things to point out. There's been a petition circulating, and there have been a number of individuals who've been arguing that we should not pass this tonight, but we should delay it for some, several months. But I think that Jeff made a good point when he pointed out that in fact, the process has been going on for two years, and they have had literally dozens of open meetings, and there have been numerous opportunities for people to put in their two cents, and a delay now, I think, would be a disaster. It would mean that the program couldn't go into place next year, and then it is likely to run on the shoals of, of the bureaucracy and the difficulties of getting things re-engineered and back up again. With regard to one of the issues that Craig just mentioned, the amount of detritus that is dumped by people because we don't have a regular pickup is extraordinary. Chief Carlton, the fire chief, and one or two of his volunteers went out and just did a quick swoop of three or four of the main roads and picked up over 500 pounds of garbage. Two other individuals went out a week after that and just on one road picked up another 600, I believe, pounds of garbage, including food and medical waste. And this is a health hazard, and these sorts of things will disappear when we get the full mandatory pickup in as is, as is proposed. Finally, just one quick thing I'd like to point out, I understand that Mr. Hedges was, had complaints filed against him, and I am startled to hear that this happened. I'd like to put in a commendation myself personally, and I believe that dozens and dozens of people who are involved in this process would be behind me. His, his operation here and his functions and his work have been just extraordinary, and I'd like to thank him for his, his efforts and his advice. Thanks.
Could I just ask, hey, I can ask him one question?
Please come up to the podiums and stand.
These complaints were filed with who?
I do not know.
So you just...
These, these are the sorts of things that happen, but they happen generally anonymously.
Okay, I don't need to hear you talk about it. I just wanted to, we haven't, I haven't heard anything about complaints filed, so it didn't come to us.
I don't think that they were filed with council.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Kristen Rock. I'm just, I'm for the garbage, mandatory pickup, and like everybody else, I agree.
Great interest, yes.
Like everybody else, I agree about the illegal dumping is just ridiculous, like, I mean, it's... Like, I mean, it's out of control. Kristen Rock. Is that better now?
Yeah.
Okay. I was talking about the legal dumping is out of control in Point Roberts, it's everywhere. I mean, it's ridiculous, it's, something has to change now. And also for all, if I go buy a vacation property somewhere in Arizona or Vancouver, I have to pay for, you know, for pickup of garbage, I have to. So I don't understand why there's, in Point Roberts, there's this different, I don't know, I don't get it, I don't understand. I also have a property in Canada, in Terrace, up north. We pay for garbage in our taxes and we don't even get the pickup. We don't get it because we live too far out of town, but we have to pay for it. And that's all I have to say, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. So Louise Cassidy, Samantha Schofeld, Kimberly Butts, Ken Calder.
Good evening, my name's Louise Cassidy. And first off, I'd like to confirm that you did all get my emails?
The name.
You didn't get to see them?
We got a lot of emails, it's, it's hard to remember the exact name.
So you didn't get a chance to read them then? I hope so, I hope so, okay.
I did read you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm here to ask for a delay. I don't feel that we have developed a strong enough program to go forward that this is going to just be a stopgap and then things are going to fall apart and nothing's going to get served. We should be not getting over-served in garbage pickup, we should be given incentives to reduce our waste. We should be compared to resort communities like Lopez Island or Orcas Island or, not Vancouver. You know, we are the states and we can't even be compared to Bellingham. You know, we'd need to be compared to another far-out resort area in the county. And then my final comment is on the UTC. In reading the original application, it was stated by the staff that they would review the financials with the service provider, seeing as it was his first year, it was a budget proposal, they were wanting to help him and help him have a successful company. That didn't happen. The UTC, from what I understand, isn't going to do anything unless somebody, unless the service provider asks for a rate increase. Hasn't happened. So the UTC is sitting there doing nothing, absolutely nothing. They haven't come here to present to you their position, they haven't told you anything about how this all works. And I am very concerned that the money is going to end up in the county and then what? Who's in charge of the money? Who decides how much money the service provider is going to be paid? What happens with the excess? Does it go into the general funds of Watcom County or does it come back to Point Roberts? So that we can implement greener recycling programs for our community. And so I would ask that you really consider that the community wants a little bit more time to fine-tune this.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you.
Chair, Ms. Cassidy. You mentioned resort communities doing it differently, could you give a specific example?
Actually, there is another presenter that will be doing that.
Wait, sorry, would you say that again?
There is another presenter that will be doing that.
Oh, okay.
Well, I don't know if it was you or who, but somebody talked, somebody said in their email about that Lopez Island does it differently. Oh, that was.
That will be.
See, I remember all you guys, but I don't remember who's who.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't know what they do.
Samantha Schofeld, Kimberly Butts, Ken Calder, and Anne Madden, please.
Hi, I'm Samantha Schofield and I'm here today to ask you to delay your decision on the garbage proposal for Point Roberts. Our community has thirteen hundred and fourteen current full-time residents and many of those are seniors on a fixed income. And the level of garbage that's being mandated under this proposal is far too high for small homes, for seasonal residents, and for seniors. The mandated level of garbage in Bellingham, the minimum level that anybody has to have is one can a month. This service is more than double that level of service. So if you're in Point Roberts right now, if you were in Point Roberts year-round, you would get two cans a month. If you were in Point Roberts six months of the year, you would need to use one can a week. If you were a seasonal resident who was there in the summer, which a good many of our residents are, you would have to use two cans of garbage a week in order to make sure that you used the mandated level of service here. If however, we were subject to the same levels of Bellingham, it would be one can a month. If you were there for a year, every other week, if you were there for six months, and one can a week if you were there for just the summer months. There's details of this plan that are far too aggressive as a starting point for mandatory service. I also want to address the issue of John Cupp at the Utilities Commission. The Utility Commission makes mandates that the provider can only have a 5.9% profit and they haven't done a review of operations, in answer to your question, Tyler. They will not do a review, financial review of an operation unless a rate is requested and at that time, they will go through the process and they will go through every single line item in one year of expenses. They won't go through more than one year. So that's the answer to your question. The main reason that has been cited over and over again about we need increased curbside service is that the operator, in Point Roberts, have had a historic challenge being, maintaining the service level in Point Roberts because of our low level of customers. I've been in Point Roberts since nineteen ninety-nine. We had problems with garbage in two thousand and one and we had garbage problems in two thousand and nine. But we've had the same operator since two thousand and ten. And that operator, if you look at their recent financials, made a profit in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. If we are going to make a decision about the change in levels of service, I think it is reasonable that we look at the current history of the current operator and their track record as opposed to a painting them with a brush of a previous operator, because everyone should stand on their own merits. So I ask that the committee delay your decision on this and allow the community to work a little bit more on the details of this plan so that it can be more amenable for more of the users and more of the people who you, who pay and for homes in Point Roberts.
Schofeld, do you know how they justify whether it's a legitimate business expense or not when they go line by line?
So I asked them that and they will go through, they don't, so they don't go through the financial report. They actually go through the books of the operation. So for example, one of the expenses in one of the financial reports is a fine that was charged to the operator. And the UTC said that those kinds of things will be removed from the operational costs. In addition, on the financial statements, it says that there's a cost for the dump, for renting the dump and the fee that they're, the seven hundred dollar encumbrance, that isn't charged as a part of the curbside operation. So the, the job that the UTC does is quite complicated and separating out the different models of service that this operator does because it's two separate things. Curbside is one model with a certain set of costs that can go against it and the transfer station has a completely different set of costs that can go up against it and the two can't be commingled when they do their review.
When you said it was profitable for those previous years, was that after they subtracted those additional costs for fees?
So that was the financial statements provided by the operator. So if you go through the financial statements, the, they, the operator reported a profit over his four businesses. So they have drop-off, drop-off at the transfer station, curbside collection, commercial collection, and then pass-through service. So pass-through service is those big bins that you buy, you, you rent, you fill up the bin and the bin goes to him and he takes it away again. So over those four models of business, he made, together, he made money in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. He did not make money in two thousand and seventeen, he reported a loss of nine hundred, nine thousand four hundred dollars. But there's financial inconsistencies on the reporting of recycling that make it seem that, that it could not be that way. But the important thing there is that if you look at their revenue for curbside pickup, it's actually increased the last five years, curbside revenue has increased. The loss over this, in two thousand and seventeen, was a reduction of income at the transfer station.
Kimberly Butts, Ken Calder, Anne Madden, and Mark Robbins.
I'm Kimberly Butts, B-U-T-T-S. Dear County Council, I request, respectfully request that you delay a decision on the amendment before you tonight and allow the PRAC newly-appointed Waste Subcommittee to have time to create a plan that meets the needs of our unique community better than the proposed amendment does. Here's some information that supports my request. At the October ten, two thousand and seventeen PRAC meeting, Mr. Hegitus stated that the system needs to work for seasonal property owners, which is seventy percent of the properties in Point Roberts. Under the amendment, they would have to pay for services they do not use, this is not fair. The current proposal of twenty-six pickups does not take in the needs of seasonals into account and exceeds the needs of eighty percent of those who were surveyed in the October two thousand and sixteen that use once-a-month curbside tags or self-haul. Less than seven percent replied to the online survey out of the four thousand six hundred and eighty-four tax parcels in Point Roberts. This is not a reasonable representation for something that affects so many property owners. The majority of the seasonal properties, population has already left the point before this was done. Again, this is not fair. Mr. Hegitus also said, and I quote, "Originally, I thought once per month might be a minimum level of stand, of service." Then talking to Dave and looking at the four-dollar difference, knowing most people are not like you, they generate garbage, right? The person he was speaking to said, "They are a family of four that generates one can of thirty-two gallon trash a month." I, myself, am a full-time resident, I generate less than one can a month of garbage, just like eighty percent in the survey. Just because something only costs an additional four dollars does not mean we should buy it. The proposed ordinance to amend, to mandate a higher level of garbage pickup and to pay it on our tax bill is an attempt to discriminate against Point Roberts property owners by treating us as a different class than other Watcom County owners. The current ordinance permits the rest of the county to apply for an exemption to garbage service pickup. This proposed amendment specifically takes that right away from Point Roberts property owners. Can Do is not capturing all the revenue available to them now under the current tariff. Thank you for your consideration.
Ken Calder, Anne Madden, Mark Robbins, Harry Kish, and Heidi Baxter.
Ken Calder, Point Roberts property owner and general contractor. Over the past ten days, a handful of people had asked people to read this petition and if they agreed, we asked them to sign. We had a few questions, were they a property owner? And if they were not American, we tried to only get one signature per property. And if they were American or a registered voter, we took their signature. The petition states, "We, the undersigned, request that the newly-appointed Point Roberts Subcommittee on Waste Management be given until September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, to work with the community and the operator Can Do to come up with alternative community-minded solutions for garbage and recycling options in Point Roberts. We ask that the Watcom County Council to postpone any decision-making on Point Roberts' solid waste until this new committee has been given a chance to report back their findings and recommendations." Of the three hundred and sixty-four signatures that we got, two hundred of them are year-round residents with the remainder one hundred and sixty-four seasonal. And as it is still early in the season and a lot of the Canadians aren't using their places yet, that's why there wasn't more. A few other things, Mr. Hegitus stated the one-dollar walkout fee, round trip from your house, that's incorrect. It's one dollar per twenty-five feet that they carry per bin. In two thousand and ten, when the current provider was at the UTC, he stated that at sixty to seventy percent of the current, of the level of curbside customers that the previous customer had, which I believe was three twenty-five, he said at sixty to seventy percent, he could be profitable. The rate reviews are at the request of the provider, the John Cupp and Mike Young at the UTC. One or the other has asked over the last three years to see if they could get a rate review, the provider to go through that process and they never got it done. He's never had a rate review or audit done on his books to see if he truly is losing money and this is something that we need to tax every property in Point Roberts. My family goes back to the eighteen nineties homesteading in Point Roberts. It's in some of the family's bloods to self-haul. I personally, I believe in the curbside system.
Thirty seconds, please.
I use it. My family of four generates one can of garbage a month. Why should we be forced to pay for, for a higher level of service? The, and the seasonal property owners shouldn't be subsidizing my garbage. As compared to the GBRD, the Canadian Service, they put the, the garbage service out to bid every few years. Companies are competing, we have a provider with a monopoly, nobody can compete against him. And there is three hundred and sixty-four people that.
Time.
Thank you.
Anne Madden, Mark Robbins, Harry Kish, Heidi Baxter. And then Deidre Goff.
Who's next?
Annette Madden.
Please, please proceed, Ms. Madden.
Hi, Annette Madden. I am a curbside customer and my family produces one can of garbage per month. I think it would be unfair to set a higher minimum standard for Point Roberts and require us to pay for more than we produce. And it seems we're putting the cart before the horse here. If there's been no review of the financials, no audit, no business plan presented, nothing to state that this is needed and it is discriminatory to our community for us to be held to a higher standard than the rest of the county. The, your, one of your staff commented that there was a survey put out. It was put out through a community email listserv and not by the county. All property owners did not receive that or have opportunity to respond. And there was a lot of negative feedback in that survey as well. And I just feel that enough opposition has been presented, enough questions raised, that it is the county's due diligence to investigate before just passing this and handing a bunch of money with no plan for oversight or improvements or anything of that nature, thank you.
Wait a sec, I have.
Mrs. Brenner.
Question. What was the, what was the company that put out the survey?
Uh, they, we have a, a community distribution list, it was called a Point Interface or PAWS. It was, you could send in meeting notices, you could send out items for sale, you know, that sort of thing. So one of the community boards advert, you know, sent out the survey that way. But unlike the letter that the county did send to all property owners, the survey was not made available to all property owners. So if you, if you don't, if you own property but don't live there or don't subscribe to the email list or don't get the local paper, you wouldn't know of the survey and be able to have opportunity to participate.
And when was the Subcommittee formed?
I think they said about a month ago.
Sorry, can I ask one quick question, please? Where was the letter sent by the county? You said.
Couple of months ago, we got it in the mail, two, three months ago.
Three, two, three months ago?
Somewhere around there, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Was there any letter previous to that?
Not that we received.
Not that you know, but.
No.
Okay.
I'm Mark Robbins, I'm president of the Point Roberts Taxpayer Association. Good evening, Council. Two weeks ago, I addressed the Subcommittee on Public Works and Health and I believe most, if not all of you, were there at that Subcommittee meeting and my comments then were based on a formal letter that I submitted on behalf of my Board of Directors. So I, I trust that you've seen that letter and I ask that you take it into consideration. I don't want to use my three minutes repeating myself too much, but I want to make a few additional comments. This process, which has gone on for two years now, has been a highly collaborative, very thorough process, which was premised on the UTC finding and the analysis of the Health Department that the present model is not financially sustainable regardless of vendor. And if the Council accepts this premise, then, as we do, then we think that you need to act to solve that problem and not delay the, the solution. to act to solve that problem and not delay the, the solution. People in Point Roberts have a legitimate expectation of, of continued curbside services, sustainables. Yes, probably full-time residents especially, but all, all residents have an interest as well in a cleaner environment, free from the constant dumping of household waste in our parks and ditches around the point. It's unsightly and it's unhealthy. At the same time, we, we recognize the reality of majority ownership by part-time residents, and we have no objection to, to the extent feasible to accommodating their interests and making the system as, as flexible as possible. We applaud the adjustment to make this a 26-tag system instead of a bi-weekly collection of the same amount every two weeks. Possibly reducing that number even further would be good, although I suspect that the, the per-household costs would not actually come down because you're talking about the same personnel and equipment to go around the whole point every week, but might make people feel like they're not paying for services they don't need. Also figuring out a way to allow self-haulers to use their prepaid minimum service tags at the transfer station...
30 seconds, please.
...might be good. I don't know if it's feasible administratively. Finally, we think that stabilizing the curbside services is just the first step. We really expect and want council and administration to look at other needed improvements. The transfer station is frankly is a disgrace, and that comes under the county. People want to see other improvements to make Point Roberts a greener community, such as commercial recycling, yard waste composting, a stronger anti-dumping measures.
Time.
Thank you.
My name is Harry Kish. I'm an American and a Canadian citizen, and I've been in Point Roberts for 30 years. Just, this point you just made was interesting about the, being able to use your tags for, to go to the actual transfer station. Because in my experience, I've found that, just from talking to people, and actually I was part of this petition thing where we went around and visited with people, and most people do like using the transfer station. So, it is possible, I guess, that they could, if we had tags, but they're not talking about tags, they're talking about variable. Now, if they were talking about tags, and you could use those tags as cash and sort of move your trash around that way, that'd be great. That's a great idea. But the, what some, what this other lady says, 12, this 26 is a lot of, is a lot of trash cans. There's a lot of people that just aren't there. They're, they're, you know, they're, some of them are only there a couple of weeks a year, really. So, they're going to see this garbage can, garbage guy going by, and there'll be no cans. So, basically, I guess that's about it. I had all these things I was talking about, but everybody else already said everything, so I don't see why I have to offer, except that I do believe one time, one pickup a month is plenty.
Heidi Baxter, Dee Goff, Jeff Chriswell, BJ Kish, Bronwyn Glor, and Matt Parrish.
I'm Heidi Baxter. I'm the one that went to Lopez Island last week. I've got some pictures to show you. I've been a resident of Point Roberts for almost 30 years. I'm a dual citizen. I believe in Point Roberts. We need to keep our curbside exemption for as long as there's mandatory curbside in Waukam County. More than 70% of us self-haul. We have 590 exemptions. Only 315 use curbside. Wouldn't give them the freedom of choice. We have a variable work schedules that do not allow us to meet a garbage truck. Self-hauling works well for us. Last week, I went to Lopez Island to learn their system. I met my friend Warren, that I've known for a long time, resident, and he recycles 90% of his material. We took his van full of recycling, plus only one 25-gallon container, to the transfer station. I learned to separate plastics into four different containers and did that, looking at the bottom and these little things here, and I was learning all different kinds of plastic there. They just signed a special deal with BC Plastic Recycle Operation in Canada because China won't take their plastics anymore. That's really close to Point Roberts. We can do that, too. They're very excited about it. There's three county-paid employees plus volunteers. Key is an educator that would really help us with some of the illegal dumping in Point Roberts. Her name's Nikita. She wants to help us. She's really cool. She also goes to schools and helps people learn from when they're just kids. And that, that way, they have high quality of recycling material on Lopez. Their free store is actually a tourist distraction. When I was there just for two days, I met a family of four. They were really excited to visit. If they were just out of bed, they said, "That's the place to go." Two years ago, their county tried to sell their operation to a private company, but the community said no, to keep their operation locally run so they can continue to recycle efficiently and keep costs down. What is key to this operation is a large amount of self-haulers that Lopez Island has, just like Point Roberts, who care to recycle onsite and be part of the solution. Warren said, "They get better and more recycling happen, happening when people separate their recycling themselves."
30 seconds, please.
Because low-paid employees from a business owner that makes profits are main goal may want, be the way to go. Thank you for giving our community time to hear the details in ordinance. Over 40 people at the Point Roberts PRAC community meeting, June 2nd, just on Saturday, voted overwhelmingly against this ordinance. If there is a recycling fee imposed on our community, we need a costing plan and the ability to vote and direct funds to real solutions. Point Roberts Recycling Committee should oversee these funds from community, not private business, who has conflict of interest. Please vote no for this ordinance, or give our community time to work on infrastructure like Lopez. And I vote a lot. So, in Canada, in Cortez Island, Gabriel Island, Salt Spring Island do similar things. We can do both. We can have curbside and self-haul. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. That was great.
Dee Goff, Jay Chriswell, BJ Kish, Bronwyn Glor, and Matt Parrish.
You have a good call, Pat.
Patrick, you're not on the list yet.
You're not on the list for this.
I'll sit down until I get, I'll be last. Until I be last.
That's good.
Sit down, Pat. It's my turn.
Hi, my name's Dee Goff. I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce. You all received my email from the Chamber. We are in support of it. And I tell you that because this is what Point Roberts looks like right now. This is garbage on the side of our road, outside the marina, that I had to pick up last night and put in the marina garbage can for them to pay for. It's not fair. But I'm not going to go over what I said in the email because I did send it to all of you. I'm going to talk to you as a resident of Point Roberts. I am a full-time resident. I am a family of four. And yes, I do have curbside pickup because I am not a self-hauler. I do not have time on a Sunday in a four-hour window to drive my garbage to the dump. I'm happily to put it out on the curb, just like normal people do in Canada and the rest of the United States. I think that we need to start somewhere, and I think that if we do postpone this, it's going to die, and it's going to die just like it did last time, and we're stuck right back where we are. And I lived there when we lost our garbage provider last time, and it cost me personally hundreds and hundreds of dollars picking up the garbage that was thrown in my forest across my street so that my kids can go out there and play. And I'm not willing to do it again. I'll be calling the county every time the garbage needs to be picked up from an empty property because I'm not going to be responsible. And I'm sorry that people think that $17 is a lot. I understand there is people who can't afford that. And I'm sorry that vacationers think that they shouldn't have to pay, but they pay for water when they don't use water. We have a set flat fee for water. They pay for that. So, what is the difference of not paying for the, or paying for the garbage if you're not using that? It is a common service that every community has. It is a way of life for us. I choose this way of life for me and my family. I love my way of life, and I love my community. And we all agree to disagree here. We'll probably all have coffee together afterwards. But we need to start somewhere, and I think this is a good start. Because I'm, I'm sorry that people don't feel that they weren't fully informed. I own property in Canada. I choose to be a part of that community that I own property in. I choose to know when the Chamber meeting is. I choose to know what is going on in that community. So, I'm sorry that vacationers didn't take the time to find out what was going on. If it's in our newspaper, I pick up the Delta Optimist to find out what's going on in Delta. They can request it to be mailed to them. There's been plenty of opportunity. This is a two-year process. It's not like we dreamt this up yesterday. So, I would really appreciate you passing this through tonight so that we can start and I don't have to pick up garbage out of my forest. Thank you.
No, no, no applause or criticism, please. Jeff Calisbell, BJ Kish, BJ Kish, Bronwyn Glor, and Matt Parrish, if you could please line up.
Evening, everybody. And my name is Jeff Christopher, and I'm the, I was here earlier this afternoon. I'm the chair of the Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee. I want to welcome people that are here from Point Roberts. Obviously, it's a very passionate issue. The only thing I really, and I'm not going to waste your time by repeating what other people have said. The only thing that really bothers me about what's been said is I've heard a lot of negativity about the Waukam County public service, and specifically about Jeff Hedges. I'll tell you, that is, I think, very unfair and very misguided. Jeff Hedges and John Wolf are sitting over there have been absolute candidates for sainthood as far as I'm concerned. We've been going at this for almost 30 months. We wouldn't have made it 30 minutes without Jeff shepherding us through the process. He's been outstanding. We've driven the poor guy crazy. And as recently as 30 days ago, we were still making adjustments cognizant and reflective of some of the community feedback we had received on what, what was the best, walking that gentle balance between having a, a viable vendor and having some consumer flexibility. That's all we've been trying to do. There's been no project that Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee in its history has worked longer and harder on than this. So, I congratulate you publicly, both of you, for, and thank you on behalf of our community. I'd also like to say, and I'll, I'll just speak for, for a second or two more. 1,168 pounds of garbage were picked up by volunteers in two sweeps this year. Now, Mr. Calder, what he said was absolutely correct. The seasonal season has yet to start. So, with no one on the point, just a few straggling seasonal residents and the full-timers, that's how much garbage was picked out of the ditch, including personally myself on Valentine's Day, picking things up like medical gauze and dirty diapers. I mean, Dee is quite correct. There's something that has to be done on this. This is the first bedrock step on a long process. And Heidi was absolutely correct when she said, "This is an evolutionary process. We have to move this forward." This is the first step in that process. First step to move toward a more self-sustaining, environmentally sensitive area, which is our beautiful Point Roberts. And I think the last thing I would say, and reflecting what Heidi said, because I promised her I would say this in the interest of full disclosure, and that is, there were 40-some people that were definitely dead against it at the meeting on Saturday that turned out for our last meeting on this. They were given four choices. They're given the choice that PRAC has put forward.
30 seconds, please.
They were given the four, the choice that PRAC put forward. They were given the choice to delay. They were given a choice to adjust the plan that PRAC had put forward, and they were given a choice to scrap it altogether. The result was overwhelming for those people to scrap it altogether. To me, there's, there's a clear choice to do nothing or to follow this plan, and we hope that we make a decision and we can move on with it tonight. So, thank you very much for hearing me out.
BJ Kish, Bronwyn Glor, and Matt Parrish, and Patrick. And that's the last I have signed up. If you want to speak to this, please come down.
My turn now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is BJ Kish. I am an American citizen. I'm also a Canadian citizen.
Sit down. Good.
Good. It was scary up here.
No, it makes my people get to here.
And my house is on South Beach Road. We have owned it for over 30 years. I am a senior on fixed income, and the proposed level of service far exceeds my needs for garbage service. We do self-haul approximately one can every month. We're only at our house for three to four months in the summer. I expect to pay for garbage disposal, but I really can't afford to pay for more garbage service than I'll ever use. My husband and I are both on fixed incomes. Now, with regard to the media and telling people about this survey, we received no notice, and we have not spoken to anybody. My husband spoke to 40 people. None of them got this message. Not everybody has emails or checks it or takes it as seriously as maybe they should, but they're not on the list. I'm not on the list, and I've been there 30 years. So, my other issue was that the Point Roberts Canadian homeowners come and go. They're seasonal people. They pay their property taxes. They have jobs. They have children. They go home to jobs, family, health issues, home repairs, et cetera. So, they're not glued to this issue as maybe permanent residents would be, but I'm not sure that we should punish them by making them pay for a service they're not going to use. As a part-time resident, I'm part of a majority of homeowners paying property taxes in Point Roberts. I would like any solution to consider the many concerns of these seasonal owners. Thank you.
Okay. Bronwyn Glor, Matt Parrish, and then anybody else who wants to come up, please.
Hello, I'm Bronwyn Glor, and I am a red, full-time resident in Point Roberts, and I moved to Point Roberts about a year ago from New Jersey. And when I arrived, I found that garbage disposal is a much different thing here than it is in New Jersey. Apparently, we create a lot less garbage here because minimum pickup there was mandated at twice a week, two cans each time. So, I was thrilled to find that there were all these different levels of service, and I opted for once-a-month curbside. And, single person, you know, I have no problem with the one can a month, but I, I want to learn from the families of four who are doing one can a month, how I can reduce even further. As a recently retired environmental science teacher, I recycle like a crazy person, and I compost everything, and still, you know, a can a month. But I feel in full support of this idea of, of the minimum pickup, and I, you know, I feel like a community has to come together to solve problems, and if I need to pay a little bit more, I'm not going to put out more cans than I need to put out. I'm not going to make more garbage because I can, but I feel that it's important to try to solve this problem of the dumping that I've seen, and I walk a tremendous amount. I see it all the time. The, the other options to illegal dumping are, you know, burning or burying, all of which I've seen or heard. I have an unbuilt lot next to me that's filled with everything, and I am slowly in the process of trying to clean it up myself. So, I think it's a, a big problem, and I'm willing to put out a little bit more money to try to help create something that's workable. I think it's important that we have a hauler who can make a living, and I don't pretend to know the financial details there, but I, I want to make sure that we don't lose the possibility of a service being provided. So, I'm, I'm in support of this measure. Thank you.
Okay. Last on the list is Matt Parrish.
Evening, council. My name is Matt Parrish. I've been in Point Roberts for about 20 years now with my wife. We own four individual properties. Basically, I think we're getting wrapped up in some stuff that's a little bit more minutia related. We've proven since 2009 that the current system does not work, okay? What this will increase is the economies of scale allow downward pressure on all the costs associated with everyone, and thus removes the incentive to cheat. If everyone is mandated to pay, then you don't have to put out 26 cans a year. You could put out one and consider it, okay, it's a $200 can. This idea of it's forced or it's mandated is, is almost irrelevant. You're there, you use it. You want to put out four cans one month and zero the next month? That's awesome. But the idea is it reduces the incentive to cheat. We have neighbors that go at night, put their can, put their garbage, and other neighbors who pay. It's just on the basic of common sense. It's not fair. You spread it out, the economies of scale. I'm sorry that people can't afford $200 a month, but that's the nature of doing business. No one is forced to live in Point Roberts. No one is forced to have a vacation home in Point Roberts. This is almost a luxury that you have to just decide whether it's worth it or not. So, that being said, there's all these impassioned pleas. I find it very, very dising- I find it very, very disingenuous that we're criticizing a business owner in the United States of America for making a profit. That's irrelevant, okay? If he makes a profit, files a legal tax return, that's irrelevant to this situation. What we need to do is pass this or remove this exemption. That way, everyone has to share the cost. It disincentivizes the cheating. It allows for, there will always be the parcel post people who come. Instead of dumping in the ditch, maybe they'll dump it on a personal, individual can because they know that will be picked up. It's already paid for. I won't have to guard my cans like as if it's a cost coming. Everyone has to share the cost. And so this idea of you cannot go self-dump, you cannot self-haul, those services, I think, will still be available. I don't know the business, and I don't want to know the business. If anyone thinks that they can make so much money, well, they could apply for a business license. They could compete and start their own. And then they could apply to the Utilities Commission and see if they get, if they think there's so much money in it, there'll be competition.
Thirty seconds, please.
And thus, there'll be downward pressure on the cost. If you can't afford $17 a month, that's just too bad. I'm sorry. But if we share the costs, I think everyone will benefit. It will reduce the incentive to cheat. It'll stop all this illegal nonsense. And I'm firmly in favor of removing this exemption. Thank you for your time.
Who else would like to speak on this issue? No, I'm sorry. Not if you're already spoken. Speaking on Point Roberts garbage.
This is about Point Roberts garbage. You want to speak about that?
I love garbage.
The Utilities Commission.
I'm Pat Alicey, 4825 Alton Road, Birch Bay, also a resort area. We have a lot of Canadians in our area, and they're hooked to the sewer. And they're charged a year round for that sewer and for the potential of delivering water to them. It's what happens. We also have a lighting district, Birch Bay Lighting District. You guys handle the bills on that. Thank you so much. And even the people who are blind at Birch Bay have to pay into that. We have Birch Bay Warm, which is based upon impervious surfaces. And it's a fee. And I know somebody who has impervious surfaces that drain down and under the ground, and they pay all. And I have a garbage we collect, you know, for years. And I hate to tell you this. I have a neighbor, he's not at Birch Bay all the while. And I commit an illegal act when he's in town. I accept $5 from him, and I let him dump garbage in my dumpster. And that's illegal. But it gets the job done. Good luck with all this.
Best chocolates anywhere. No clapping. God.
At the risk of making it a little bit more levity, Mr. Alicey, this is the second time you've admitted to committing a crime up here. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes a comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Follow that anyway.
And what is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Mr. Donovan moves approval. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Mr. Buchanan, beat you to it. Ms. Brenner.
Okay. I'm going to take a deep breath. I'd just been told tonight I'm not normal. No one has ever accused me of being normal. I have a picture, a photograph somebody took of me. I didn't even know she was taking it. I was dumpster diving in that dumpster out behind the courthouse because there was recyclables there. I have an exemption, and I am furious that there's never been one time that the Health Department has even bothered to check up on anybody. I think you could solve this whole problem by saying, you've got an exemption. And I do remember when I signed it, there was something about you could come on my property. And I said, oh, anytime. That'd be great. No one's ever come to mine or anybody else's, obviously. It seems to me an easier solution would be, those people that have exemptions, they get notified by the county, not by some private organization, but by the county, that you have an exemption. We may be by your house at any point to check out if you're obeying the laws with the exemption. And if you aren't, you're going to be fined $300, $500, $1,000, whatever. I think that would do way more to solve the problem. I'm just like, we put our whole porch, our back porch, instead of using it for anything else. We've got it all with, you know, plastic, glass, paper, all the different recyclables. Our garbage can, and there's my husband and me, our garbage can gets filled maybe once every three to four months. And I'm like obsessive. I admit it. But this whole idea of comparing garbage to water, or someone else said, to schools. Schools are beneficial to everybody. Everybody believes that. Water is obviously a physical benefit. Garbage is a problem. It is not a benefit. And to do anything that doesn't encourage people to reduce their garbage, I think is a sin. And the reason that Bellingham has as good a program as it has is they've taken it seriously. I wouldn't even mind if the exemption thing went away. But the way it's set up for Point Roberts, to me, is completely outrageous. Or if it was for the rest of the county, it would be completely outrageous. And when Mr., what's your last name? Galatley. Did I say it right? Yes. I found an old letter from you, and you actually didn't want this kind of system. It was from you and Calder's dad. It was like ten years ago. Don't interrupt me. I have the letter. And if you're going to yell, go outside and yell. I waited. My turn. I just feel that you were the one that also said, from what somebody said, you didn't refute it, that you could make it work with the system that was in place. I don't know if that happens or not, or if things change. I'm open to that. I'm open to actually doing away with a mandate, or with the exemption, but not the way it's proposed at all. And why did it take so long to set up a subcommittee to go into these issues? If you've been doing it for two years, seems like that would have been the first thing to set up. If I was doing it, it would have been. I just, I don't feel like we have enough information about the profit, you know, how it's being assessed. I also want the name of the people from the UTC. You gave us five pages. It's fifty-something page thing. And I just got it today because I just found out there was this huge document. I want that. But I also don't understand, because I know initially, we were told, those of us who got, I can't speak for other people. When we got an exemption, we were told that the county could come by and inspect. And obviously, you haven't done one inspection. And to even, I mean, there's human nature. There's a good side, and there is a bad side. Some people cheat. But to go this route, instead of first trying to figure out if people are actually doing what they say they're going to do. We keep saying we want to reduce garbage. That's a big thing. We don't want to reduce schools. We want to reduce garbage. And I think the more we can encourage people, that one woman who spoke in favor, but said she'd love to find out how our neighbor with four people does one a month. I'm in the book. Call me. Come over and see what I do. I would just love it. Anybody who wants to. I mean, I just, I'm so appalled at garbage that I can say this very easily, that I do think we need to encourage people to be producing much less garbage. I mean, I just think it's the bane of the universe, all the garbage that is produced. And I'm not convinced that's going to cause other people who are coming there for a day or two, or however many, to stop dumping garbage. Maybe it will. But I think there are better ways. I think there are much better ways to do this. And I at least would like to give that subcommittee, they just got started. Give them the time to come up with something. And if they don't, let's, you know, let's go from there. I think they will, though. I mean, I've even, I've talked to people who's, somebody who just spoke tonight who supports this, who had these ideas of other possible alternatives people can have while still being part of the program. And that's what I think we at least need to give them a chance to do. I had no idea this survey was not done by the county. Now I know it wasn't. But, you know, I just think there are so many things here that could be made better for a lot of people. Even people who spoke against it said, well, you know, maybe I could support this if it was, you know, a little bit of this or that. And I think there's a lot of give and take that's possible on this thing. So I'm not going to support this tonight. And I would love to see the county really step up to the bar about, you know, reducing garbage and increasing recycling by giving that subcommittee a chance and people a chance to put their ideas in of what we could do. I could go on and on, but I'm just like really excited about this issue.
We really, I'm sorry. There is a picture of Councilmember Brenner diving into a dumpster on our office back here. And I appreciate your passion for recycling, but I want to speak in favor of the motion. I do, I actually think the economies of scale thing is really important, and we need to move forward with this. And I'd like to thank Jeff and the Health Department for all the work that's gone into this. I think the water and sewer analogy, I mean, it's a utility. It's regulated by the Utilities Commission in that it is a benefit. But garbage is not a benefit for people, but having garbage collection to deal with the cheating, which we know is going on, that is a benefit to all. So like, yeah, it's two cans. It's $17 a month. You don't have to put out two cans a month. But we need to have some sort of flat fee that works, and the way this is going to work is with these economies of scale. In part response maybe to some of the stuff in the public, and, you know, we could, yeah. And one alternative is we could have a lot of county employees up there trying to do enforcement and trying to do inspections or trying to, you know, staff recycling centers. But I don't, I have never seen a budget proposal coming from this council saying that we're going to be hiring more public employees to be doing those sorts of things. So I'm in favor of the utility model, a flat rate, and I hope we move forward with this.
I think Point Roberts has set an example of passion, even if it is about garbage, but they're very passionate. It's a good thing. You know, I have read, I would say, almost all the emails. Excuse me. Maybe I missed something. I won't take long, but I just have some questions. Like, we talked about water. We talked about our schools. We pay for police. We pay for a lot of things which may or may not use. But that's the norm of the society we want to live in. And this is part of the cost of living or your standard of living, whatever you want to decide. And it has been incrementally brought in because there was days in this country, in this county, there was no garbage service. Everybody was on their own. We all felt that we need to do that. And I think that you guys have experienced both. You had a plan, and then it was, you had a not-so-much-a-plan, and you have all these problems of garbage. And you are saying, we can't have it enough of that. We can't, do not want to have that. And we want to have garbage service. Now, the question comes, most of the people who have spoken, they want some kind of service. I think what they are struggling with is $17 too much, is 30 gallons is too much, is it 20 gallons too much? So that isn't easy if you look at it from that perspective, rather than saying, can I get away from it? No, you cannot get away from it. You're going to have to have some kind of service. Even self-hauling and putting, that is a mandate putting on people. It's not totally voluntary because if a lazy guy like me doesn't do it, then what happens? So the other part, I would say, is that I like that 26 tags. And if you are going to haul your own garbage, you can use that tag as a part of the payment. I don't know how it would work or not, but that is one of the idea which was unique, which came out of the discussion today. And I would like that you guys want to discuss about it. Now, what I see where we are going with this as a society. In BC, in BC, the recycled BC, they are bent on, they have a program to reduce garbage. So they are going to come up with a weighing cell on the truck. When he picks up your can, it tells how many pounds it is. That's one thing they're doing. The second thing they are doing is they are auditing your garbage can. They take your garbage can. They take random garbage cans. They take it out. They put it out on the floor, and they pick. There are so many tomato cans and so many bottles and so many other things, paper, which was recyclable, and you put it in the garbage. This is all our responsibility. And then they start citing people. Because that's where we are going. We are running out of space. Even it is not Point Roberts' problem, but I'm trying to tell you where this is all going. And we are saying, we don't have a garbage problem. We have a huge recycling problem. Some people say that they create only one can in a month. I think they should be incentivized. Probably they are recycling more. They are probably auditing their garbage on their own. They may have not only three totes. They may have five different totes to put different garbages in there. It takes only five more minutes in each household to do that. And we can reduce our garbage bill and our garbage problem by many, many fold. We're spending billions and billions of dollars. So I would say I'm in favor of this. It may not be a perfect solution, but it's a solution. Now, one more thing I want to say, that, which I'm very much favor of, sunset clause. So I'm going to say that we should give ourselves two years and review this two years. What are the things which are working? What are the things not working? What are the things we're saying today were legitimate, or they really came out to be true, and some are not came out to be true? So, and we can look at the financials as well. I mean, I don't think that we should be auditing private companies for their profitability. Like gentlemen said, I really liked it. If it is so profitable, there will be three applications in two years. And this is not a monopoly. This is not a monopoly. It is monopoly because I would say the people who say monopoly, why don't you go start a company and make an application? Nobody is stopping you. It's monopoly only when nobody wants to do that. That's why it's a monopoly. Go attract new companies, give competition to can-do, and solve this problem of that. But I think making profit is not a bad thing. I'm not against making profit. Now, we don't do that to Microsoft. Oh, show us how much money you are making and what your line items are. We don't do that to a lot of other companies which have government projects or supply to the government. So I think that reasonableness, WUTC, has a very reasonable guideline because they control our electricity. There are more than 200 electrical companies who sell electricity in Washington State. They control them. All the natural gas companies control them. Water rates are controlled by them, and garbage rates are controlled by them. That's a huge commission. They have a huge responsibility. They're not looking at only Point Roberts. They look at the whole state and all different sectors of our state in the Utilities Commission. And there was a reason the garbage was put in that. So if I have to sit down and think about, is Washington Utilities Commission corrupt? Oh, my God, we really have a problem. So I will stop there. I would say that we better start with a program and then improve it as we go and make it better than just saying, well, can I avoid it for three months or six months? Problem's not going to go away. It hasn't gone for the last five years.
I'm going to speak in favor of this motion. I'll explain why. First off, I've never owned a property anywhere that doesn't have a mandatory garbage pickup. And that includes residential seasonal property. pickup, and that includes residential seasonal property. The seasonal residents, by definition, at Point Roberts, if they're a seasonal resident, then by definition, they've got two homes. We're being, if we don't have pickup, then what's going to happen is that we're going to have garbage that's dumped, and I know that from firsthand experience, because I've owned property for which I've had my, had garbage dumped on it, by people who didn't pay for garbage pickup. They paid someone to take it away, and they took it away, and they dumped it on my property. The problem is, is that when we have garbage dumping, the rest of the community picks up the tab, because garbage that's dumped ultimately ends up into the creeks, and ends up into the rivers, ends up into the ocean, and then it becomes plastic pollution predominantly in Puget Sound and then the rest of the ocean. When I look at the rates that we're paying in Bellingham, I think my esteemed colleague next to me found that the cheapest rate was thirty dollars a month. I, hmm?
According to my wife. Hi, Dad. Thirty dollars for two cans plus yard waste.
Right.
That's two cans a month.
So seventeen dollars is actually less than what you'd pay in Bellingham. And I would actually speak against the sunset clause, because I think two years is far too short for a person to be able to justify the capital investment in the equipment, and garbage trucks are not cheap. Hauling garbage is certainly not cheap. I think it currently goes to eastern Washington. So stuff that's coming from Point Roberts is going through the borders twice, and then it's coming down, it's going through Seattle, across the mountains. So I think this is a more than reasonable approach, and I will be supporting it. Ms. Brenner.
Well, you said everywhere you've lived, you've had mandatory garbage collection, and you still had a garbage problem.
No, I've had garbage problems on vacant land that I've owned that other people have used as a dumping ground because they're not paying for garbage pickup.
Oh, but why would they use it as a dumping ground if they have garbage, mandatory garbage pickup themselves?
Because they don't. There are people in the county who've got exemptions from garbage pickup, and so they dump it on private property like my home.
Oh, so maybe that would be good, and I brought it up as a suggestion, to have somebody from county enforcement go out and either find out who, because you could do that real easy, they've done it before on other things. They look through garbage and find out people's names and addresses and everything. I've done it on the side of the road when I go pick up stuff, and I've called it in and complained about those people. I mean, there are so many things we could do. There's not one person sitting up here who has a money problem. So this sounds like not a big deal, but I know, I know people in Point Roberts who do have a money problem. I know people in Point Roberts who produce way less garbage and do way more recycling. And again, this is, you know, comparing it to other, oh, and by the way, you said it's not a monopoly? Of course it is. Every single company that has an area, they monopolize the area, no one else can come in as long as they're providing that service. So it is a monopoly. It is true, for a certain area.
You have to rig the contract.
Excuse me, I'm talking, and you got to talk, you can refute me all you want, but if they're providing the service at the level they said and what they were doing, the only way that someone else could come in is if they're not providing the service like they said. If they are, they have control of that area, and no one else can compete with them, that's the whole purpose of a utility. So I'm, you know, you guys are going to do what you're going to do, but I don't like when you make it sound like it's not what it is.
Further discussion. Mr. Bird.
My turn. The, Jeff, can I ask you a couple more questions? So if I wanted to start a garbage company in Point Roberts today, could I go up there and do that?
No, you could not, because someone else has the approved franchise.
Thank you. How many houses currently use service again?
About 300.
300. And what's the proposed number that we'd be moving to?
It's between 2,000 and 2,300, single-family residential dwellings with on-site sewage systems.
So here's where I'm at. It is a monopoly. The, if I can't come in and start a business there and compete with you because the government doesn't let me, and you're the sole provider for that area, then it is a monopoly. That is my definition of what a monopoly is, and if someone wants to argue that that's not a monopoly, that's fine with me. But that, that would be my definition. The, I think outside of this, actually, the first thing I really wanted to start with is, DeeDee, you came up here and said, or Dee, no, sorry, that, thank you. I think you had my favorite comment of the whole night, and I just wanted to point that out. And it was that, you know, everyone here is passionate, but afterwards you're all going to have coffee together. I wish our whole country could say that, because we'd be in a much better space. So thanks for pointing it out, and thanks, everyone, for having that type of passion and still being able to leave and, and talk to each other about it, because I, I can speak for myself, I, I really appreciate it. As far as the issue goes, the, and outside of the monopoly portion, this is a private company. It's different than the water or school districts, where excess tax revenue stays there and continues to go towards that effort. In this case, as a private company, that excess revenue is kept by the company and is taken by the business owner as profit to do with as he pleases or she pleases, they please. That's a very different type of situation in my book. If we had audited financials that we could go through, and we could sit there and say, hey, you're right, you're losing money year over year, and I could verify that, then it'd be something I might consider, but to be honest, I'd probably still struggle with it, just put all my cards on the table. The, but without looking at financials at all, and just going off of, hey, I lost money one year, that's difficult, but most businesses I know have lost money some year in their history. And if you've had multiple profitable years, and the first year you lose money, you come to the government and say, hey, I need you to now mandate my service to everyone that can only buy from me, that's a difficult problem. I'm a business owner, my question is, where do we draw the line? I know there's a number of people in this room. Can I charge everyone here $200 on their taxes every year to support my business? It's marketing and communications. You might not think it's important, but hey, it pays my bills, and it pays the bills of all my employees. So where does that line get drawn if it's not here? I'd like to know kind of where people stand on that at some point. As far as the, there's a couple of things that, that Councilmember Sedoo said that there were, that I'm trying to wrap my head around. We have this a couple of times throughout the day and months, so we're okay here. But if we're running out of space, and we're looking at our environment and saying, we need to live more cleanly and environmentally safe or sound, how do we do that and then turn around on the other side and say, but we're going to mandate that you put your garbage in a landfill? To me, that doesn't make any sense. It's kind, it's an oxymoron to some extent. The, you're running out of space, so we're going to require you to put more garbage into that space versus to find better solutions for it. And when you bring up other communities that are doing this, that are very similar in size and characteristics and restrictions, and they found a solution for it, that leads me to believe that you guys can find a solution for it as well, that doesn't require us to mandate it across everybody, doesn't require us to fill up more landfills across the country, but actually would help us to find a better solution that would help the environment in the long run and help a lot of the people here that stood up and said, I can't financially manage that. The, in addition to that, service doesn't stop dumping. I drive around this county to a number of events constantly. I can't not see garbage everywhere I go. There is garbage on every road in this county. Now, it varies, but you have the work crew go out from the Sheriff's Department, and they pick up bags, and you'll see those orange bags up and down the highways, littered, and there's a ton of them, because there's a lot of garbage, and we mandate service here. And so for you to, for me to like wrap my head around, hey, that problem's going to go away just because we tell people they have to use the service, it's not really the case. I wish it was, but it's not. And the bigger problem becomes with dumping, the things that you can't put in a 32-gallon dump or garbage bin, it's those, the couches and the mattresses and the recliners and the bicycles that people throw in the back of their truck along with all the other garbage, and then they pull over and they shove it off somewhere. That's going to continue to exist unless you start getting these commercial-sized dumpsters and telling everyone they have to buy those now so it fits whatever they might want to use. Again, where does it end? I don't know. Now, if we were going to say, let's say hypothetically, this council wanted to approve this. If they were going to approve it without looking at financials and looking at whether the company actually lost money, and just said, hey, we're going to take that at its word, and we're going to assume that you lost money, and it's going to continue that way, and that unless you, you get help, that you're not going to, that you'll go out of business, and it'll continue to be a worse problem. If that was the case, and we took your last year and said, you lost $9,000, and we're going to mandate this service across 2,000 homes, not the 2,300, but the 2,000 homes in total, that would be an increase if we only did it for one time a month, not, not the every other week, but one time a month, so $4 a month for service, that's a hun, or excuse me, a $96,000 increase. That small increase still gives you $90,000 in profit overall. And that's only one time a month, which most of the people up here already said that they're, you're using. And that's not the people that are already going to be using it more than just once a month. It might have weekly service or twice a week service, or maybe they have two cans every week, I don't know. So I don't see why we would actually go to a point of a can a week or the 26 cans a year. One can a month gets you to profitability. And if we want to look at that in two years and say, hey, are you not profitable now? Okay, then that might be something I could get behind. Again, it would be difficult, because at the end of the day, it's a for-profit business that's asking government to require that it makes a profit. And as a business owner, God, I wish I could do that, but at the same time, I am morally against it, because I can't. So that's where I'm at, long story short. Thanks, everyone, for listening.
Mr. Tomlinson.
I guess this is a question for staff. Do we currently mandate that everybody in Watkins County has to have garbage service as Mr. Bird said?
That is correct.
Can you get an exemption?
That is also correct.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to hear.
And I will add to that, that in the 2016 approved Comprehensive Solid and Hazardous Waste Management Plan, as an action item, review of the existing exemption program is going to occur in the five-year planning cycle. Currently, we require curbside collection, but we say anybody can get an exemption.
Right.
That's old, it hasn't been ever enforced, and it needs updated. Thank you.
Hey, Dad, I just want to make sure that the public, after hearing that speech, that we already mandate, this is about removing the exemption in Point Roberts, the exemption that exists in the county that might be part of the problem that you're seeing when you're seeing all that garbage all over the place. The other thing, and I don't like responding to people's speeches, but when you're calling out members of the council, where does the law, the line get drawn in terms of businesses asking, can you ask? Well, the line is, is it the state, you know, over decades, if not a century, determining if it's a regulated utility, natural gas, electricity, and in this case, maybe garbage? So it's no, no, not any business can just go, hey, put this, you know, something that they can pay to make you profitable, but that is part of the history of this state, is regulating utilities and then finding the fine line where those utilities can make enough money as monopolies. I mean, I will admit that, they are monopolies.
Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, and most of those utilities, a good number of them, offer people the incentive to use less of their utility by using solar or wind or other types of things that way reduce their, some people live completely off the grid and just use solar or just use wind or both. So you're kind of, it's such a different thing. Garbage is not something that we, anybody likes. So I think, I mean, why isn't the first thing we're talking about is our staff, I'll wait till you guys are done talking, why aren't we talking about instead of having these guys, I mean, we wouldn't need a whole bunch of new staff people if they went out to, you know, three places in the county once a year and scared some people straight who aren't really doing what they should be doing. This was set up to fail, and it was set up to fail because I don't think that our solid waste people want exemptions, they don't, they want everybody on the same thing, and it's so much easier for them, I get it. But it's not easier to create the incentive for people to reduce their garbage, and that does take a lot more work. It's not, you know, I said this already, but it's like, you can't compare it to other utilities, which do give people discounts for, for using greener things. This isn't doing that. This is a one-size-fits-all, and it's a big size, so.
Any further discussion? Mr. Bird.
The, I, I think that the, the argument that there's exemptions allowed, so it must be the people that have exemptions that are doing the littering, is a straw man's argument. I, I think that it's an easy argument to make, but there's no data here that's being used to prove that. I would say that when I drive behind someone on the freeway and I see him throw a popcan out the window or a cigarette butt out the window, that the majority of the time, those people actually have garbage service, and they're just being lazy about utilizing it or taking the time to clean out their car. And so unless there's actual data behind that claim, I'm, I can't get, I can't get behind it. I think that if we wanted to talk about stronger anti-dumping fines and rules, I'd be all for that. You want to say, hey, it's going to cost you 10 grand if we see you dropping litter on the ground? Okay, let's do that. Let's stop them from actually littering or incentivize them to not litter versus requiring everyone else to be punished because they're littering. That, that one doesn't necessarily make sense to me. The other thing that I would point out is that I have a good friend of mine, and he owns a garbage company. And his garbage company, I double-checked with him here just now, and his garbage company sells 100% of the waste that they bring in. 100% of the waste they bring in is sold. And it's all kinds of waste. I mean, human waste, garbage waste, I mean, everything you can, down to the cigarette butts, everything you could imagine, they sell, and it goes to somebody else that they use. What do they use it for? I have no idea. But the point being is, I, I think that there's other ways for companies in the industry to make money, and I really believe that if there was competition, true competition, in which I could open a business in your market tomorrow and start competing, that then there would be incentive to find those ways. That so long as government continues to mandate this and only allows one person to compete with that region, and we continue to say it's okay to force people to put garbage in landfills versus finding alternatives, we'll continue to see our landfills grow and get worse. We need to come up with better solutions, and it should start here. I hope it does.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Tim Blue.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
No.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
No.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedoo.
Yes.
That passes five to two with Brenner and Bird opposed. Next item up is an ordinance adopting amendments to the Watkins County Code. Title II, Administration and Personnel, Title IX, Public Peace, Roles and Welfare.
Can I, excuse me, can I just clarify one thing? There was this additional information given to you by Jeff. I wasn't, is that something that you want to bring up?
To be clear, the community was highly desirable of the 26-variable program that's indicated in the blue on the amendment to ordinance there. So the question that's being asked is that, is your motion to approve including that additional language?
Okay, you've caught me a little bit off guard here, because do we have an amended ordinance, ordinance or not?
We do not. So this would be, this would be an amendment to the ordinance, so you would need to reconsider your vote, bring the ordinance back on the floor, and somebody could move this, and I don't believe it would require an additional public hearing.
What, what was the?
So if I may.
Can I begin?
If I may go ahead on this. So this language came about right before the canceled third committee update. We did not have a chance to- We did not have a chance to discuss it. It's something that the commit, the community was really wanting. So we put the language in, but did not have an opportunity to include it into what was already submitted. Legal staff has deemed that those extra couple of words are not a substantive change. Indeed, it will be explained in the UTC tariff in full detail, but the community wanted to see it in the statute. And so we accommodated that, and I handed that out so that when you made your motion, one way or the other, you would be including that language in that motion.
Okay. So for the record, I understand your new name is Saint Jeff.
Please tell my wife that.
I shall. So the addition is, it's not increasing the number of pickups, it's not increasing the cost, it's just allowing the customer to have discretion as to which day they want to pick it up.
Correct. Instead of putting one can and three source-separated recyclable bins out every other week, which is a total of 26 per year, the customer will get to put out 26 32-gallon cans at their choosing. So if you're a permanent resident on vacation, and you're not there for a month, you get to put out those extra cans the next month. If you're a seasonal resident, and you're not there in the winter, you get to use those pickups in the summer.
So let me just see where this...
I always thought this was, when I moved, I thought I was moving that.
I have a...
All right, so procedurally, this is what we're going to do. It needs to be someone who voted for it, doesn't it?
It could be either.
Okay. Okay, well, I vote to, what's the...
Move.
I move to what?
A motion to reconsider.
Sorry, a motion to, I make a motion to reconsider.
Jeff?
Second.
I have a question, please. Sorry, continue, please. You continue.
I make a motion to reconsider.
I second that.
All in favor, say, do we need a roll call or not? Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, okay. So then what we're going to be voting on is on section 8.10040, subsection D, well, there's a new subsection D, and I guess I need to read this into the record.
Somebody would move to include that in the ordinance.
Okay.
I move to include this wording in blue, 26 annual pickups to occur at the discretion of the customer on any day of the approved, every-other-week garbage collection schedule of 32-gallons can.
So actually, we'll need the whole, well, we'll need the whole thing, I believe.
I have a question.
Because there is no...
The blue.
No, because there is no H...
H170.
It said 8.10040.
Okay, there already is, okay. Yep, so you're correct. So, so we have a motion to make that amendment to the language in the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second.
I have a question. Jeff, are these tags, what, the pickups, they, are they transferable? Like, he has tags, he gives it to me, and I give it to my niece, and my niece gives it to her friend. Are these specific to the residents, and they only can use it, or are these transferable? It doesn't clearly say, I could say the word non-transferable.
So, as a clarification, the tag program is a separate service from this amendment to ordinance. The tags are something that are, you purchase...
It's totally separate, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
But in this, they are also not, they are like site-specific, address-specific?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
Just wanted to be clear.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
Never mind.
Mr. Bird.
Whose motion is it?
It was Mr. Sidoo's motion, and Mr. Donovan seconding it, and we are considering discussing it now.
160...
No, thank you.
169, 170.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to your motion?
Sure.
That, don't say yes yet.
No, no, I want to listen.
The, would you change the 26 cans to 12? 12 still gets them over to profitability, and makes the financial obligation especially for the elderly and the less fortunate easier.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I would say that, I don't know that, and I don't know how you know that. I don't know that. I don't have financial information to say they're making it 12. I haven't seen that details and data that I can say that.
So the question there is something that was discussed at the advisory committee over the course of about a year, when we were talking about the minimum level of service. And there was lots of discussion about frequency of pickup and size of can. And after lots of discussion, every other week, over 32-gallon can was the recommendation. So there is no, there is no provision in this amendment to ordinance to go to 12.
No, I understand, that's, but to clarify...
Go ahead.
You said that we would be adding roughly 2,000 more properties, and the, no? How many properties are there currently using the service?
We will going from, be going from a current customer count of 300, up to in between 2,000 and 2,300, which is still one-third of NUKSEC Valley disposal.
300 to 2,300. So we'll be adding roughly 2,000 additional?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And if it was at that service, it would be $4 per month for one pickup a month, based on the rate that I saw in here, times 24, or 12 months is $48 a year. What's the rate for one month of pickup?
Can I, can I add to that?
I have a tariff here, and I could try and find that, it's not $4.
Well, out here, no.
So the cost of the minimum, the cost of the minimum...
Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, we cannot have people speaking from the audience. Mr. Higginson, please continue.
What's the rate for a single-month pickup?
In the tariff here, it takes a little bit of time to find. David, do you have that?
Do you have the answer?
Can I?
There are a lot of rates and a lot of services specified in the tariff.
I'm sorry, we, we're not, we're not accepting it.
She can give it to him.
I don't, like, we're making the problem difficult, and it could be, like, she could just tell me what the answer is, this is absurd. Could you point me in the right direction there? Would you just tell me what it is?
Especially if nobody else can answer, including our staff.
$5 for recycling, and 1.37, so 6.37 plus 5.33.
Mr. Bird, Mr. Bird.
That sounds correct.
Mr. Bird, I would like to ask you to ask for her to be recognized by the chair first.
What?
Mr. Higginson, please continue.
Didn't have it.
I have, you're a tariff, and I believe that the numbers just quoted to you are correct.
Okay, so that would be $152,000 in additional annual revenue that would go to him. He lost $9,000 last year. So he would make an additional, over and above $145,000 in revenue.
Okay, can I please answer?
Yes.
Okay. If I have a service to 300 people, and now I have to serve 2,300 people, you think my expense is going to be the same? Like, this is a blatant oversight that, that with the same cost, if I have one employee, one truck, I'm going to start serving 2,300 people, keep the level of service, and all that garbage that comes in, that has to go somewhere, they have to pay for it, it crosses the Canadian border, then crosses the US border, then goes to Republic, all that is going to make a difference. That's why I said I do not have the full information to make that decision, and saying that all this money is going to, and personally, I believe that there is a Point Roberts Taxpayers Association, there is a Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee, they have looked at it for two years, the profitability. I am, I'm assuming these are responsible people in the community, and they looked at that what this proposal is going to be, and the profitability, and the amount of money, and everything. Yes, I see some people trying to tell me no, I hear that, okay? You can, you are exactly allowed to believe what you believe. I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, there are responsible people. They are people on the committee of Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee, working on for two years, and they are in cahoots with this can-do, that we're going to make you $400,000, come work with us. I personally don't believe that. Maybe it is true, that's where you are going. I am going with this is, that there is a proportionate cost savings and scale, and now maybe I'm in cahoots with them too. I mean, where does this end? I personally said the same thing, that I do not know that, that what are those that having a one month and having one pickup or two pickups is, does that. And I, I don't, didn't have the time to ask for the information, and maybe it's a private company, I don't know, but that's, that's my question is, I trust people in the community who organize and work with that, they're same like other organizations. We, we, we must have some trust in some organizations who are in their communities and working for their communities.
Mr. Sidoo, do you accept Mr. Bird's friendly amendment?
Actually, I'd like to make one more point before you...
Sorry, I'd ask Mr. Sidoo a question. Do you accept Mr. Bird's friendly amendment?
No, I don't.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
Well, whatever we believe or don't believe, I don't think anybody's in cahoots with anybody, and I'm getting real tired of this scoldy crap when you, when somebody doesn't agree with what you say. You know what? We're supposed to trust, but verify. That's really important. You keep bringing this up about trust, trust, trust. If all we had to do is trust certain people because we trust them, because they have an organization, we wouldn't have a whole lot to do, and maybe some of us don't. But I would, and I'm not a mathematical genius, but I do know how you could figure that out. That wasn't the big one for me. The big one for me is this whole emphasis on, you know, making people pay a lot more for garbage. It wasn't about that, but I could find those things out, and I would think somebody in your position could find that out, instead of just saying, I trust these people because they're organized. It's, this is what I don't like when it gets down to that kind of personal stuff about in cahoots. I don't think anybody in this, in this issue has been in cahoots with anybody.
Mr. Bird.
Walk through this with me. The, if we went to 12, and it's at the six, and it increases the revenue, and it's mandated one pickup per year, and next year, he loses money again, would it not make sense for him then to take that, now that it's mandated, and take it to the trash oversight organization that sets the rates, and say, here's all my financials, this is mandated across this number of units, could you set a rate that would make me profitable? What I don't feel good about, Mr., or council member, is the fact that we haven't seen the financials. We don't know, and like you said, we're just going blind here, we have no idea. At least in that situation, it's required to go through the oversight that's set up to set those rates, and make them based on the actual financials. Right now, we're guessing, right?
No, not truly so. I, I looked at the rates for the Bellingham, which has 45,000 customers, then I had a conversation with Jeff, which I sent email to rest of the council members, three, three days ago, four days ago, and I looked at the rates for the NUKSEC Valley, which is, you know, here, and, and which is much larger distances, and they have 6,000 customers, and they are charging $17 for the same service. And then I looked at there, there have one-third the number of customers, and they are also following that rate of $17. So that's how I looked at compare. By, by that calculation, oh my God, the people with 45,000 customers must be making billions. Like, no, let me complete, complete that, because we talked about monopoly, there's more to that, that we can discuss it in this half an hour. Utilities Commission has been in operation for 100 years for a reason. Why electricity companies, why you make investments into utilities, and then you are regulated? This is not like you and my business and saying, I want to tax money. This is, this subject has been studied, and re-studied, and re-studied for hundreds of years. It didn't just come in yesterday because Point Roberts have a utilities problem. So I was looking at it, I wanted to know the rates of that, and I wanted to know the rates of Point Roberts, and see that what is reasonable. It means that NUKSEC Valley is charging three times more. Why don't we go look at their books?
So, so I just want to, I just want to remind the council that we are, we've already debated the issue of Point Roberts. We are currently debating a motion to make a minor amendment to allow the customers to choose what days they would like to put out their pickup. I would ask that we limit the conversation to the motion on the floor. Brenner, are you speaking to that motion?
The motion is to do the amendment. You have to do the amendment before you can do the whole...
I know, that's what we're debating.
Okay.
That's fine. Mr. Bird.
I would say that the NUKSEC Valley, while it's an interesting comparison, isn't a direct comparison. The properties in the NUKSEC Valley are five acres, up to 50 or 200 acres. The properties at Point Roberts are, what, a quarter, four houses are four. They're getting a lot more households in a very small area, and so their costs will not be as high, versus the NUKSEC County that has to drive much further to get to every one of those locations. It's going to increase their costs substantially. Again, I think the problem here is, we don't know, because we don't see the financials, and the organization that does isn't being asked to set the rate.
Mr. Bird, point of order, is, are you speaking to the motion on the floor?
I am speaking to the motion, Jen. I am saying I would like it to 12 versus 24, and that is the motion, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
26.
26.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
First, there was a motion from me.
Yeah, to do it. And he was speaking to that.
He was making, and I didn't accept that. So there's that motion on the floor first, and then you can move the second motion.
So, the motion on the floor, for which a friendly amendment has not been accepted, is to adopt this amendment, this amended language in section 8.10040, subsection D. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Do we need a roll call, is a voice vote, and then we do the floor? Yeah, okay. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. That passes five to two with Mr. Bird and Ms. Brenner opposed. Now we have the amended ordinance on the floor.
Move to adopt the amended ordinance.
We have a motion to adopt, do I have a second? Do I have a second to adopt the ordinance?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the now amended ordinance, any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
I'm just going to say that you guys can end this right now by doing this, but you're not going to be able to absolve yourself of the fact of what you've done to people, and you've reduced the incentive to recycle. You have not done anything to increase it, you have reduced it.
Mr. Bird, I assumed you wanted to speak.
The, I just want to say, thanks for coming and listening to this. The, the fact that you guys have stuck around just goes to show your passion again, so I appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amended ordinance? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Tim Blue?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Rudd Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
That passes, the amended ordinance passes five to two with Brenner and Bird opposed. Next item up.
I think we should give people time to get out the door.
Does the council want to take a break, or before we go to the next one? Seeing no desire to do that, within the ordinance adopting amendments, next item up is ordinance adopting amendments to Watkins County Code, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Title IX, Public Peace. Administration and Personnel Title IX Public Peace. The rest, the council didn't want to do it. I asked the council, and they didn't? No? No, I didn't.
Would anyone like to take a break? And you got up, and nobody else said anything.
So I can make a motion. Does someone wish to make a motion to take a five-minute break?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 The amendment's on the floor. Okay, we are taking a five-minute break.
He did ask. He did ask.
I did ask.
Today, project procedures are located throughout several titles and chapters in the Wachem County Code, and these all apply to permit review. They're in our zoning code, critical areas, shorelines, subdivisions, all throughout these codes. This proposal would eliminate redundancy and, in some cases, inconsistency between these code chapters. In addition to the new title, staff is proposing amendments to code's chapters showing the removal of procedural sections and revising references to code sections being changed that are now in our new Title 22. The overall purpose of the amendments is to make the code clearer and easier for the public to use and to improve efficiency and clarity in processing applications for all types of project permits as well as legislative actions. For the most part, these amendments move procedural provisions from one part of the code to another into our new Title 22, and we often make grammatical improvements when necessary. These changes, for the most part, don't change the substance of the procedures. However, in some instances, staff has proposed a few substantial changes in the procedures that are intended to improve clarity and predictability in the permitting process and to be compliant with state law and some recent court cases. Staff has discussed these changes in detail with council over several special committee of the whole meetings over the last couple of months. This proposal will also provide clear permit processing procedures for our new permit tracking system, which is currently under development. On May 22nd, 2018, the last council meeting, council moved to introduce the proposed ordinance with four amendments, which have been included for the public hearing scheduled this evening. Staff is available this evening for any questions or comments after the public hearing.
With that, I will open the public hearing, and we had Mr. Ellissey.
Oh, he's still here. Hi, Pat.
And if anybody else, Mr. Ellissey, anyone who's signed up, if anybody else wishes to speak to this item, please line up at the podium.
At Ellissey 4825, Alderson Road. I sat on some of these committees, and people gave really good input, and I was saying, uh-huh, uh-huh, and then they gave really good input. They worked really hard on this stuff. I'm really happy with what they did. Yes.
Wow.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
I move approval.
Ms. Brenner moves approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Buchanan, seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, but he doesn't ever pick me first, because I'm... I just want to say thank you. You know, it's so encouraging when we have staff work to make things simpler, more reliable for the public, and you guys, you must be exhausted. You really did a lot, and I'm impressed. Mark, I'm impressed. That doesn't... That's not often, by the way.
Mark and Kay.
Mr. Donovan.
Amy did all the work.
Actually, we want to give a shout out to Nick and Amy for the work you did on this. Those big, long spreadsheet things that walked us through what was the original code, what's changing, how it's being simplified. I really appreciate everything that you did on this. And I'm going to speak against the motion, but in favor of the work you did. The only thing that I guess I have problems with is the vast majority of this is moving things around and clarifying things and streamlining things, but there are some substantive changes to the vesting, particularly the shoreline, and what can vest with shoreline exemptions. And I think, I agree that I think what we're doing is legal. I don't think it's something we need to do. It's going beyond what I think we need to do. So, but I do just want to thank you for the work you put in.
Further discussion. Mr. Sudu.
I just want, I'm very pleased to, I think everybody got a letter from Roger Armscar, and he's very appreciative of the work you guys have done, and it's very rare that they agree that the amendments made by the staff are good. So, I think you should be pleased with the work you guys have done, and Mark, congratulations, and I support your new code.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Rudd Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sut Paul Sudu?
Yes.
Tim Baloo?
Yes.
It passes six to zero with Mr. Donovan opposed. Sorry, six to...
To one.
Six to one with Mr. Donovan opposed. Next item up is the open public session, and during the open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. If your last name is something other than Smith or Jones, please spell it for the clerk. Please make sure to speak into the microphone. Please stand behind the signs located in the aisles as a courtesy to other speakers. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you.
Jim Peterson, P-E-P-E-R-S-O-N. It's four months ago I came to the county council here asking for support for Homes Now. We still have nothing. We got the votes, seven nothing to work with us. We still don't have an ordinance. We still don't have land. We're still where we're at. I've heard council members, not only from this council, I've heard the executive say they question whether we're a reliable nonprofit. Since the last time I spoke to you three weeks ago, I'd like to tell you what we've done. We took a truck. We built a shower truck. Yesterday, we gave 22 showers. We did it for $6,100. We've done a lot. We've held summits after summits after summits. Everything that Homes Now has said they will do, they've done, they've followed through. No, we don't have any paid staff. No, we don't want your taxpayers' money. No, we don't want county money. We just want permission to do what we do. What we're asking is, give us permission, get out of our way, and let us do it. The rate we're going now, we won't have any homes built by winter. So, I have to say this. You all have homes. You have time to wait. The homeless don't, and every month you wait, more people become homeless. I don't know what else we got to prove to you, that we're capable of doing what we're doing. What do you want us to do? Become a million-dollar nonprofit and waste money on staff, or spend 94 cents of every dollar and help the homeless? That's all we want to do. We don't have a hidden agenda. I hear that you're going to give money to the Health Department. I think the Health Department does great work. They're going to hire more housing specialists? There is no housing. Hire 10 million of them. It's not going to help the situation. We need housing. We need different forms of housing. We need tiny homes. We need tent encampments. We need affordable housing built. I'm asking you, please, if it's not urgent to you, look across the street. It's urgent to those people sleeping at City Hall right now. Thank you.
Okay.
Um...
All right.
Aunt Madden, and I'd like to thank council members Brenner and Byrd for supporting our effort tonight to at least postpone what you did to Point Roberts, because it really was discriminatory, and you, Mr. Sudu, saying you did not know, you did not look at the financials. To pass that without even reviewing that is a disgrace, and that's what gives government a bad name. You threw money at a problem without even letting us develop options that would work for our community and that were fair and just to everybody. And now, the provider who has a monopoly has no accountability. There's nothing that holds him accountable. He's just going to get all this tax dollars and do what. And quite honestly, anybody who thinks that this is going to stop illegal dumping has got rocks in their head, because it's not going to do one thing. It's the people coming and getting their parcels at the parcel depots and that, that are throwing their garbage away, because they don't want to pay duty on it when they're going back through the border. It's not the residents who live there. We're not littering in our own backyards. So, what you did was a great disservice, with the exception of Brenner and Byrd. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Kowalski, and it is obvious that I have a speech impediment. My topic tonight concerns a movie that recently came out about Pope Francis, totally man of his word. I believe that Pope Francis is trying to convince people that he is a kind and humble man, but Pope Francis is a Jesuit, and I suggest to people to look up the Jesuit oath. They might be surprised. Also, if people wish, please read in the Bible in 2 Thessalonians, Chapter 2, and ask yourself the question, who was Paul talking about? I would also like to bring to people's attention to Hebrews 48 and Prophets 184, and humbly suggest to people to take Jehovah God's advice by taking John 14:15 and Mark 22:28 to heart, because he was 13, says, "Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today, and forever." Thank you, and God bless America while Joe's still here.
Ken Calder from Point Roberts. Again, council members Brenner and Byrd, thank you very much for having some common sense and realizing that this shouldn't have ever gone forward without a lot more insight. With all due respect, the five of you that just voted that ordinance change in Point Roberts, you have just punished us all without a business plan from this provider. There has been no one ever, in his years of business, have ever audited his books, and at one point, somebody submitted the spreadsheet, I believe it was Samantha Schofield, sent it in to all of you, and if you took the time to look at his reported earnings, the spreadsheet didn't flow. It would have, should have raised questions if you had done your due diligence in this, instead of just pass a tax. You have taxed us all unnecessarily, and, Mr. Sudu, you stating that you don't know the answers, you didn't look into it, shame on you. Again, with all due respect, but shame on you for voting on this issue that you know nothing about. The petition that I brought in had 200 year-round residents, from millennials to single widowers on fixed incomes and everything in between, business owners from the lumberyard to the restaurants in town, landscapers, contractors, electricians, plumbers, painters, landscapers, all across the board, people that work for these other businesses. All we asked for was some more time, but no, let's pass a tax. Again, shame on you. I just got a call from my 19-year-old daughter stating that I'm the family of four that generates one can a month that has been referenced in all of this. She just asked me, do we have, do we still have to recycle? We have that second garbage can that we're being charged for. Why do we have to recycle anymore? Well, because it's what I believe in. I support that curbside business. Most of the people on the Community Advisory Committee, which one of is the provider, Mr. Galatley is on our Community Advisory Committee. He is on the Chamber of Commerce. He is their representative on our Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee thought it wise, a little late in the process to get this subcommittee created to deal with the community and the provider, to come up with better solutions. Mr. Byrd, great, trying to get that thought down for us. I appreciate your efforts, and I would probably take you up on it, Mrs. Brenner, about coming and seeing your recycling, because I think I still have stuff to learn. Wow, I'm just blown away at the five of you voting this through without, especially you, Mr. Sudu, without looking into it.
Time.
Good evening, council members. I'm Eddie Urie, Bellingham resident, Clean Energy Program Manager at Resources for Sustainable Communities. I just wanted to follow up and respond to some of the discussion, which I was glad to hear this afternoon, in the Special Committee of the Whole regarding revisions to land use code for the Cherry Point UGA. The subject came up of propane, and a lot of folks in the community probably aren't aware that in 2014, the terminal that had been operated for 60 years by the Alcoa Aluminum Plant was purchased by Petrogas and set about major increases in export of propane, bringing in by train from other states, outbound via ships to Asia. This hasn't brought substantial job benefits or economic benefits to Wachem County that I know of. It has brought lots of propane being carried by railcar through Bellingham and these communities in Wachem, and ships, more ship traffic outbound passing through the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve, through usually on the custom areas, through the Salish Sea, through southern resident killer whale habitat, of which we do know, through best available science, does have serious adverse impacts, that were not looked at through any environmental review process. There was no EIS, let alone look at cumulative impacts of what the safety risks, what the infrastructure degradation could be, what the unique impacts to the ecological functions of the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve were. And, you know, what's done is done. I have an article attached here to share with you that details exactly what's going on with Petrogas. I'll share in a moment. But the way this one about highlights holes that potentially may apply to the adjacent industries, the other two piers, the oil refineries, which of course were constructed before all of the laws that currently govern permits, before the Shoreline Management Act, SEPA, NEPA, Clean Water, Clean Air, before there was Ecology or EPA. And, you know, when SMP was adopted in 1976, their existing activities were grandfathered in as pre-existing uses. But there's, the SMP or anywhere in county code doesn't really adequately define what the threshold is for what are those existing uses exactly, and at what point do they change when, say, long-term, you know, in decades, we can't expect to see changes in the use of those facilities.
30 seconds, please.
In this context of especially pressure right now to export tar sands from Canada, the federal government of Canada just purchased the Puget Sound Pipeline that supplies the refineries. They've cited Cherry Point as a preferred route for tar sands export in their government reports. And so, it's a, you know, considerations in the long term, what may happen, and what can we do to trigger real substantive review of changes in use for existing infrastructure upgrades on the shoreline at the dock. This is why we need conditional use permits, zoning conditional use, shoreline conditional use, to trigger that review. So, thanks for hearing me out tonight. Thanks for putting in these long hours.
Good evening, council people. Marcus D. Stidham, longtime Wachem County resident since 1984. I've said before, when I've come in here, that I feel well represented by this council, and I meant that then, and I mean that now. I think that you all really mean well, and that you really work hard to perform your decisions, and you try to take everybody's opinions into consideration. I came here, I've come here over years over different things, but I recently have joined up with the group Homes Now as a volunteer. And when I came here as a volunteer, I was so excited to tell you all how I had thrown in with these people, how they had won me over with their plan and their vision, and the people who I know in my community, who are going to be, who are going to be marching that forward. And that's a good point, community. This is a community effort. It's not, it's not only an independently funded effort. It's a community effort. These are the people who are respected among the community. When we go out on actions, when we do summits, when we do feeds, when we give, when we give away clothing or showers, we're doing that as community, and it's a community exchange. We can feel it, and we invite you to feel it with us. As I speak right now, there are members on this council who have directly worked with Homes Now, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Those of you who have not, I invite you to do that. Since I'm not, I'm not saying any names, because I believe in anonymous charity, and I think that's a wonderful thing. If you'd like to take credit, that's great. I'm, you know, we'll give credit where the credit is due. And I would like to give credit to Councilman Rudd Brown. When, on that first night when we all passed that, we talked excitedly, and I could feel the love in this room. And that night, you did say you thought maybe you would consider buying us the property, that that would be a good thing. It's on record. I sure hope that we can consider that some more, because it was later that same night that some conversations came up out of court, out of session, where it seemed like maybe we were, our group might have been less reliable, maybe at a bad risk. Further discussions later, maybe we had a bad face in weeks to come, you know, that we had a bad image. This group still consistently wows me. I'm no longer a volunteer. I am a member of Homes Now, and I invite you to be members of Homes Now.
30 seconds, please.
Join us. Take the extra effort that everybody takes, a little extra effort sometimes when you're really struggling with something. This is all of our struggle. This is our community, and this is a community solution. Support Homes Now. Do everything you can in the next month, everybody. One month, just do everything you can to help us get this going, and we will show you. We will rock you, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Ellissey, and then if anybody else wishes to speak in the open public session, please line up.
Patrick Ellissey, 4825, Alderson Road, Birch Bay. I went to a port meeting today. I told them that they're my favorite taxing authority. I don't know if you were there when I spoke. We arrived later, and what I told them was, the port tells us they're taxing us. We heard people complain about taxes. They're taxing us, and they're going to stimulate the economy. And I told them, when the economy works, you get a spread in peoples, in their wealth. And there's some people who wind up way at the bottom. Actually, some people appear to think it's because they chose the wrong things. No, it just happens. And I told the port, you know, you guys have a lot of property around the county here that is underutilized. It's not being used, and some of it is actually near bus systems, so there's transportation. And I think you should take and be open to some group that comes to you with the idea of doing a short-term lease on some of that property for camp, for homeless camp. I don't care if it's just tents. Supply them with water. You know, you can hold a sewer off in a tank someplace. I said, this is just an idea, and I'm not going to work on it, but I had to tell you about it too, because you'd be, have to be part of it to says, oh, that group there, that we just leave them alone? This group over here? Oh, I do have a homeless student of mine. Drops around, I buy him coffee. And so, I talked to him about it. I said, well, how many people could you have a maximum in a camp like this? And he was thinking about maybe 25 or 30. You should limit how many people can be in one group, but you should have different spots for them, because if this, they can't get along with somebody here, they can go over to another group. Anyways, good luck with this. Hey, we got a truck that come around and give them showers. I don't know if he's still here or not.
No, they left.
They left.
Anybody else wishes to speak for the open public session? Seeing none, we're closing the open public session. Ms. Brenner.
I move we pass an emergency ordinance that allows any nonprofit that's affiliated with the state that has nonprofit status to provide housing for homeless people. And it can't get any worse than it is. So, and I prefer the kind of housing that's been mentioned, the tiny homes, to tents. They're warmer, they're better, and those are free to us. We just have to provide the land. So, I'm moving it as an emergency ordinance.
Where is the ordinance?
What?
Where is the ordinance?
I just said it.
You would have to have an ordinance.
It's just those few words. I didn't think of it till they spoke. I think it's an emergency. I could, if it's an emergency, you're not going to have this stuff ahead of time, because you just thought it's an emergency. That's my motion.
I believe you're procedurally out of order, Ms. Brenner.
I don't think so. Not for an emergency, I'm not.
Okay. Well, I'm, Madam Clerk, are you aware of any section of the code that allows Ms. Brenner to do what she's just proposed?
An emergency ordinance would have to fall under specific parts of the charter in order for it to be an emergency, and I do not believe that that would qualify. In addition to that, we would actually need a paper document.
I'll write it up for you.
It has to have very specific findings, and it definitely can't just be an oral motion.
Well, how, okay, I will put it in writing, but how can you do, I mean, the whole purpose of an emergency is to do it as quick as possible and not keep dragging it out like what's been happening. So, I mean, I'm talking, it's a five-word motion. I don't, I, you know, I would hope that our wonderful attorney could come up with the parts of the code that refer to it. I'm not an attorney. I just want it done. So, that's my motion.
Okay.
And it's not out of...
Do we have a second to Ms. Brenner's motion before we have any discussion?
I would second it.
Okay, then we, could you, Ed, all right? We have a motion and a second.
I'd second. I just want to discuss this. I just wanted to know what we would do. Like, if you say, do A, B, C, D, E, what do we do?
So, before I will allow this discussion, I want to come back to the fact that we've just been advised by the county clerk and the county's legal counsel that this is an improper procedure. If Ms. Brenner wants to put forward an emergency ordinance, then it needs to follow the format allowed in the county code, including being written up with appropriate findings to justify its emergency nature, if I'm correct. Would that be right? The clerk is nodding in agreement.
I'll do it. But that sort of defeats the whole purpose of what an emergency is. It's not a long-term, pre-planned thing. We've been talking this thing to death for months, and they've got the houses. They've got places to put people that are not, that are respectful of people. I don't know how many people have looked at their houses, but I have, and they are amazing. I would love to live in one of those. They're incredible. And I'm tired of this, whoa, we, government moves slow, we can't do this, we can't do that. This is an emergency, and I would like to be able to use their expertise as much as possible. And they're going to get discouraged and end up doing something else, and I don't want them to. So, it's an emergency. We could lose them.
So, I suspect that Mr. Pisanius is going to speak to the zoning considerations and some of the legal issues. Would that be correct?
Yeah. Council will remember, I think at your last meeting, we had a proposal to you to, example of the city's ordinance and the city's approach, and recommendation, the motion of the council was to follow that approach and ask us to prepare an emergency interim ordinance. We are in the process of doing that. We have initial draft done, and it's now circulating amongst the departments, the sheriff's department, the health department, so forth, that would provide those services. So, we hope to bring that to you in July. Get that ready for your consideration.
Would I, would it be correct, in my assumption, that in proposing any ordinance, such ordinance, you are trying to avoid creating new problems?
Yes.
Or else to acting improperly?
This ordinance and the city's approach follows that state statute that allows religious organizations to host these camps on land they own or control, and the city's ordinance and approach actually went a little bit beyond that and also authorized 501(c)(3) organizations to also operate those camps. So, we're modeling that same approach, and the idea was that that would give a level playing field to any providers out there who might be willing and able to operate those facilities. So, you'll see those hopefully next month. Ms. Brenner.
Well, and I got to say, I respect you. I'm glad you're the planning director. How can we, with a straight face, call something an emergency, and then it just keeps dragging on? And I'm not blaming you, but I don't get it. I, for regular ordinances, I could understand this, but this is an emergency, and they have the houses all ready to go. They, some of them have been built, and they got nowhere to put them.
Your legal counsel is right, is correct. We, you need to have findings, and we're going to prepare those for you, but you also, you know, it's very much a public health and safety issues that have to be addressed as a part of the operation of these facilities, both for the, both for the residents as well as for neighbors. So, all those things have to go into the ordinance and have to be carefully vetted, and so, we're doing that.
I get it. Have you been out to the Lummy, tiny Homes Now place?
I have not.
Oh, please go, and I would like to go with you.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, it's just, it's amazing what they've done. So, it exists. I'm sorry.
Mr. Brenner.
The, I have a draft ordinance based off of that, that I will bring to the next council meeting for us to review. More than happy to use yours instead, but I agree, time is of the essence. Bellingham can do it, based off the same thing. If Bellingham can do it, based off the same thing, I think that it's probably been vetted pretty well, and, like I said, happy to use yours, but I will be bringing one to the next meeting.
Okay. Good to do it.
And for the record, I just want to make it clear, I'm very supportive of solving this problem. I'm very supportive of whatever legal methods we have within our disposal. One of the caveats is that we don't create problems elsewhere for people like neighbors or health and safety, or whatever the case may be, or even the residents of these, of these areas. So, but I do want to do it in a way that is procedurally proper and defensible, particularly from a liability perspective, so... Mr. Sidhu?
Yeah. I've been working on the same thing and looking at the city zoning for the Bellingham City, Linden and Ferndale, as well as the county zoning. I look at more from the longer-term solution than emergency solution. What we are facing, just building 20, 30 homes is not going to relieve the issue. It will just make a small dent in the issue. Because once the low-income housing is available, there are people on the, on the stretch who are about to fall off the wagon, and they will fill the same spots what we, we think that we can fill with. The long-term solution is that, that what we need to do in our zoning codes for the city and county, and that should be in each neighborhood, what we should say, that we're going to designate three or five lots, the regular half-acre lot, or core-acre lot, or whatever, and which are vacant, or have an old house on it, or boarded-up a house, or outright purchase. Because you have to bring private capital into this to make it successful. So, what I'm working on is that in each neighborhood, we should designate, say, five lots, and, and it should, the paint should go everywhere, in every neighborhood. And then those five lots should be designated that you can build between five and 10 tiny homes on there, because there's utilities, there's everything, there may be common utilities, maybe common kitchen or common bath, but there are 10 tiny homes, and I'm talking 200 square feet homes, and they are legal. Now, what it happens is, if it is legal, then private capital can come, and they can actually build those homes, excuse me, and charge a rent, so that it becomes economically viable. And then we do, as an experiment, one or two places and see how successful this is, and then those five or 10 people live how, in homes, and they are spread out among the neighborhood. They're not, we cannot concentrate 100 or 200 people in there. The second thing I was looking at, we have public parks everywhere. Why can't we have three tiny homes in the corner of each public park? If people want to say that they care about homeless, people want to say, "We want to solve the problem," then they have to step up. They can't say, "Take them somewhere and put them somewhere, solve the problem." We have to be a solution of the problem in our communities and everywhere. And that is the way, make it so that it's privately viable. We can work on temporary solutions for a while, but if it is in private hands, it will be maintained. It will be kept up, and, and, and it will be an ongoing operation. That's what we really need in our community. It, it's a little bit longer-term plan, but I see that if it, we want to have a solution to this problem, then we need, the other issue is going to be, who should live in these homes, or who should they be allowed, because they are only 200 square feet? Is it for single people, people with kids, college students? I mean, there are so many metrics of people who could live in that house. And, and so, so it, it is not a simple issue of finding a spot, put 10 homes on there, and then we say, "Yay, we solved the problem. We have 10 tiny homes." Yes, it's a start, and that will be a good start. But if you want to look at long-term, we have to find a solution like that, that there are lots throughout the county, throughout the city, and Linden, and Ferndale, which allow these 200 square feet homes.
So, before we continue any more discussion on this, I want to address the issue that I think this is an improper ordinance for consideration in the first place, and I would like to read the county code and then ask our legal counsel for advice. So, "As an emergency ordinance, is, is an emergency ordinance necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, safety, and support of the county governments and existing institutions may be passed by an affirmative roll-call vote by two-thirds of the entire council. An emergency ordinance will be effective when it's approved by the county executive. The specific emergency and facts creating it shall be clearly stated in the ordinance, or emergency ordinances except those making appropriations from emergency reserve for borrowing money for 120 days shall expire at the end of the 61st day." So, we have failed the test of, of stating the nature of the emergency, and if we were to pass this tonight, it would, it would expire in 60 days, and I'd rather be dealing with staff on a long-term solution. So, my interpretation is this is an improper ordinance, and it's not improper to vote on it. And unless I'm going to get contradiction from the council, from the county clerk or our legal counsel, I'm going to proceed on that basis. Donovan?
I was going to ask Councilmember Brennan to withdraw her motion, since we've already had other alternatives from staff and another council member as potential ordinances.
Can I respond?
Will you, are you willing to withdraw?
Um, no, I'm not willing to withdraw because what he said is not accurate.
Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brennan.
We do have that in Waukem County.
Ms. Brennan.
It already exists.
Ms. Brennan, we are not, we are focusing on whether the ordinance is even proper before further discussion.
And I disagree with you.
Okay. So you've been, um, I'm looking for guidance. I think maybe we'll take a vote. Uh, I put a motion to, geez, is it...
You guys need to go out to the Lummi project. It's already there, and it's beautiful. Anybody would want that in their neighborhood.
I'm looking for the right procedural method to deal with this.
My best guess would be to just vote on Councilmember Brennan's motion.
Okay, but she hasn't met the criteria for it to be an ordinance.
I don't believe so.
Do you wish to change it to a resolution? We can vote on a resolution.
Uh, since a resolution has no force of law, no, I don't want to change it.
Uh, I'm looking for guidance here.
We don't even have an ordinance in writings.
Yes, I know, that's the problem. We, we can't, we can't vote on an ordinance because it doesn't meet the criteria.
Correct.
All right.
He's going to get the writing in, like, a minute, he'll have it done.
Well, I'm, I'm...
I believe we would have to have vetted findings to include in the ordinance.
I think the comments they made are certainly findings. I would just use those as findings, and it...
Ms. Brennan, could I ask you again? You are chair of the planning commission, committee or whatever. You've had many opportunities to come up with this emergency ordinance, maybe do it there.
Well, I, we've tried. We've done this for months. We've been discussing it, and we're all here now. We're not all in committee all the time. We're here, and what they just said, I, I think is more than enough substance to make it an emergency.
I, I don't know, we, we don't have an ordinance. You're, you're kind of playing games because the cameras are going here, as far as I'm seeing it.
I'm what?
You're kind of playing games because the cameras go in here. You don't have an ordinance. You made a motion that really doesn't make any sense.
No, just because you do something doesn't mean I do. I'm upset because those keep, guys keep coming back. They've already done, they've proven it, that it works.
Mr. Buchanan, do you have a suggestion?
God, these personal attacks.
First of all, we need to dial down the red, dial down the anger and, and follow our own protocols, please. I think that's the first thing we need to do. If the chair declares that this is an illegal motion...
She didn't say it was illegal.
Based on advice given by council, I don't see why that's not enough to quash the motion.
Is it illegal? Am I, what I'm doing illegal? That's a different word.
I, I would definitely, my interpretation is differently improper in terms of the interpretation of the county code.
Proper is a subjective word.
Right. I, I, you need to have a written ordinance before you can vote on it. So, you know, I don't like to say what you're doing is illegal, but it certainly doesn't comport with the requirements implicit in the charter.
Because you say it, I will, no, I'm going to withdraw my motion for tonight, so be prepared in two weeks. And you're not going to shut me down by ins, you know, insinuating that I got any other motive than what those guys said tonight. I think that was, you, you have no right to decide my motives on what I'm doing.
Ms. Brennan, are you withdrawing your ordinance?
Yeah, but I also feel very insulted that you said that.
Okay.
You've known me for years. I do stuff because I think I should, not because it's...
We are now, we are now moving on to finance.
Hammer bullshit.
We're now moving on to finance. Mr. Sidhu?
I don't...
We have the consent agenda for finance, please.
Uh, I was going to ask the council if you can, excuse me, please, I'm not feeling very good.
Okay.
And it's really late, and I've been kind of...
I know you're sick.
My thing, and I would like to be excused if you can, and Tyler can read those.
Okay, so Mr. Bird has been sharing his gift.
Yes. And I appreciate that, if you guys can do that. Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
Mr. Bird, would you please address the consent agenda?
Very nice.
Yeah, I hope you feel better.
Thanks for the halls. Feel better. The, does he have like a checklist that says who voted how, and...
Uh, do, I, I have it if you wish. I can, I can, I can deal with this. Do you want me to deal with this?
Oh, I don't mind doing it, but...
The, the council consent agenda...
Go for it.
Okay. Council considered three items of the consent agenda, items one through three. Item one received a vote of 2-0 with one abstention. Items two and three received unanimous approval. I move all three for the council, for full consideration. Any discussion?
I'd like to remove one.
Want to vote on that separately?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You want to vote on one separately?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So then we'll consider items two and three for the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0 with Mr. Sidhu excused. Next item up is item number one, which is request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Waukem County and the opportunity council to provide partial support for 24/7/365 facility-based staffing at 22 North, a 40-unit apartment building supplying affordable permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing behavioral health and other health problems, and have a history of homelessness and amount of $250,000. This received a vote of 2-0 with Mr. Bird, if I remember correctly, abstaining, and I so move. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains, abstentions?
Abstain.
That passes a 5-2, 0-1 abstention with Mr. Sidhu excused. Do you want to continue on with the other finance items? And just for the, I'll just tell you, just for the record, uh, number three was held until tonight, and the other five received votes of 3-0. Oh, there's amended versions, sorry. You want me to do it?
Which was amended?
Okay, so the amended, uh...
The amended is three that we got. That was held for tonight.
This one here. Blue one.
The, did I...
No, it's...
So I have, I have an amended version of the purchasing system ordinance, which is in the blue covered.
And the amended version was, we agreed in committee, instead of removing the sunset provision, we're to change it to, to sunset at 2021, December 31st.
Um, okay, that, that's correct. So, Finance Committee today approved 3-0 ordinance amending Waukem County Code 3.08, purchasing system, A B 2018160. Move approval.
Move approval. Any discussion? Ms. Brennan?
Yeah, and not to let you down for the camera or anything else, but more and more, the council keeps abdicating our responsibility, little by little, giving it over to the executive. We are not a team. We're not supposed to, you know, I like the executive personally. There's nothing to do with that. It has to do with what we're supposed to do. I could even be, you know, encouraged to do like the $10,000 one way or the other, but this 10%, I think, can get, can get way out of hand, and it's not about who, who I trust or don't trust. This isn't a trust issue. We are supposed to be a check and a balance. And I worry that the administration could also, if they decided they wanted to do it, maybe another executive, or maybe whatever, could cut up contracts into little or smaller contracts, so that they could be able to use that over and over and over again. I don't trust doing it. It's not whether I trust the administration, I don't trust doing it. And I think it's a bad, it was bad the first time. I didn't support it then, and I don't support, I don't support repeating that.
Any further discussion?
I just have one more point of clarification. I don't know, Dr. Hutchings, if you, maybe you clarify this for me, but, or Deputy Exec, is the 10% for the overall approved budget, or is it for the line item budget? So, if it's a $10 million overall budget, but the line item is $1 million that's being changed, is it a million or $100,000?
John Hutchings, Public Works Director, this is an exceptionally important point because the answer is neither. The 10% applies to the contract amount. The amount of money that is authorized in your budget, in the line items in your budget, is fixed. That's the amount of money we can't exceed. So, at the point you adopt the budget and you approve the appropriation for these capital projects, there is a, a limit on how much money can be spent on that particular project. So, for example, when Ms. Harris came back today and, and clarified that there was a project that had a $200,000, and actually, you're going to contemplate that a little bit later, a $200,000 contract amount, and they, and recognizing that because of some emergency issues that had, that happened last winter, that that project was now going to cost upwards of 170-something thousand, and that with contingencies, it would likely bump up against 300,000, which was over the 10%, then it was necessary to come back and, and make sure that the council approved that before we bump up against it. So, there's a difference between the purchasing code as it relates to the authorized budget and the contract amounts.
So, let me use a different example, and you tell me if I'm on or, or off on this. My example's going to be, we approved the list, a budgeted amount to, to replace all of the vehicles here a couple months ago, and then you came back with the trailer, and the trailer itself was 10, over 10% higher. That 10% higher on the trailer was not 10% of the overall budget that we approved for all the vehicles, it was for that line item, and that's why it had to come back, correct?
That's why we came back. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Brennan?
Yeah, I just want to point out, he came back, they gave us more information, and I support it, but I don't support giving them the 10%. And for small things, small amounts, I can, you know, I can understand that. Anything else, if it's that important, they can declare it an emergency and do it if it's so important. Otherwise, it could come back to us and should come back to us, and not, you know, allow just this 10... Yeah, I just want to point out, he came back, they gave us more information and I support it, but I don't support giving them the 10%. And for small things, small amounts, I can, you know, I can understand that. Anything else, if it's that important, they can declare it an emergency and do it if it's so important. Otherwise, it could come back to us and should come back to us and not, you know, allow just this 10%. Too wide open.
I, I just need to make a point.
Mr. Bird?
I'm gonna vote for it because we're approving that overall budget and it can't exceed that budgeted number and it's the line item flexibility to get the project done, but because it can't ever exceed the, the budget amount that we approve and that we see in advance, I feel better about that than what I originally thought, which was that 10% was of the budget and they could go over the budgeted amount by 10%. That I didn't feel good about, but now that I understand it better.
Well, I understand, and you haven't been through a budget session yet, and I think you will, I think you'll change your mind when you go through it. It's enormous. We have reams and reams and reams of things. We used to have it so that we did all that, but then we got a second bite at the apple individually as the contracts came forward. We don't have that anymore. Once we do it, it's done. And to stick all that stuff in like a month and a half for us, which, you know, the executive staff has worked on for many, many, many months, it's, I mean, it's fine to do it, but to not have that ability, if you learn something after the fact and before it's happened, to be able to change your mind, we're, we're basically not allowing ourselves to do that. And I, I just think that it's a bad idea and it didn't used to be that way.
Any further discussion? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Rudd Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Tim Baloo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
That passes five to one with Mr. Sidhu excused and Ms. Brenner opposed. Next item up, Mr. Bird.
Ordinance establishing Waukesha County Code 1.32, adopting rules regarding compliance with Chapter 42.56 RCW, Public Records Act, AB 2018-155, was approved in Committee 3, 0.
And was approved with?
We haven't corrected.
You remember this, the lime green version?
Lime green.
Right here.
Our truce.
The one that's being passed out is the new lime green version.
Ah, the new, okay.
We took out that part.
Hard to tell. All right. And the changes, oh, what?
Oh, this is what was in...
What is, what has changed, Madam Clerk?
It's just been, this, the version that was just handed out was corrected. The one that was handed out today in the green.
For some reason, and I can't figure it out, what you ended up with removed Section 5 of the, of 040, I think it was, and it should have removed chapter, Section 3, so it now correctly removes Section 3.
Oh, I see, okay. And so for the record, the section that the council decided to remove was a section that gave final decision-making authority of a public disclosure of records to the county council shall be vested in the chairperson of the county council or the chairperson's designee. And I personally, as the Chair, do not agree that that should be the case. I believe the oversight should be from someone other than the council chair themselves. I'm sorry, I broke a bit of protocol here, but that'll just explain the difference. Is there any further discussion on this item? Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, where is this change, Karen? I, I remember what the change is, but I don't see it. And maybe that's because it's not there, because we did the change. But it'd be nice to have it marked through so we'd know.
I was the one who was tasked with making this change and I didn't do it in track changes. I talked to Jennifer. I, sorry for the confusion. I did it right though, the first time. I honestly did.
I can answer this question. Ms. Brenner, that's the section that's been removed, the one I just...
It's 1.32040.
Okay, just a sec. 2040. So it's not there, which is why I don't see it, but...
Right, it isn't there. It was removed. It used to be number three and so it's gone and what was, what was four is now three and what was five is now four.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Eric Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Tim Baloo?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Rudd Brown?
Yes. That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. Mr. Bird, item three.
Request authorizing for the county executive to award bid 18-18, enter into a contract between the Waukesha County Flood Control Zone District and Iverson Earthworks LLC for the Marine Drive Levy Repair in the amount of $197,549.42 and request county council to approve the increase in the estimated capital cost of the Marine Drive Levy repair from $200,000 to $300,000 and authorize the county executive to execute contracts up to the increased estimated capital cost. Council acting as the Waukesha County Flood Control District or Flood Control Zone District Board Supervisor, AB 2018-166. Updated copy is the yellow sheet. This was not voted on in committee, but forwarded to the council for a vote.
Just as a correction, there's not a change, it's just additional information.
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
I know, I hate to do this to you, John, because I do support it, but I just saw this thing in there that on the information we got, eight or nine thousand was for miscellaneous, and I would sure like to know what that includes, that what, to me miscellaneous could be the planting and all this other stuff, which was included. So just give me a couple examples of miscellaneous. It was what we got today.
Right, so in any contract, there is unforeseen expenditures that, that aren't, don't fit under these other categories. And you can see that under the original planning level cost estimate, there was $8,000 and I don't know exactly what, yeah, the answer is I don't know specifically for this project, but in just about every schedule for construction project, you'll see that.
No, you got, you gave specifics on all of it, so I was just wondering about that.
So...
The big increase that we were trying to get hard information on was Phil. That's like almost $35,000 more in Phil because of the Thanksgiving.
Because of the flood.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Do we need a motion for this discussion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bird, so Mr. Donovan moves to approve. Mr. Bird, seconds. I hope that's not the beginnings of Mr. Bird's gift. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. Next item up, Mr. Bird.
Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Waukesha County Flood Control Zone District and Waukesha Conservation District to provide additional funding and to extend the period of performance to support the Waukesha County Pollution Identification and Correction Program in the amount of $181,700 for a total amended contract amount of 300, or excuse me, $535,066. Council acting as the Waukesha County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, AB 2018-167. Committee moved with a three, zero vote for approval, so moved.
So it's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, just for anybody who doesn't know, this is an extension of what's already been happening and it's all grant money. It's not from the county money. Not that county tax, taxpayers don't pay taxes for the grants too in the end, but it's a, it's a very, it's a good program.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. Mr. Bird?
Resolution authorizing the county executive to act as the authorized representative on behalf of Waukesha County for Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Farmland Preservation Project Grants, AB 2018-168, approved in Committee 3, 0, so moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused.
Request authorization for approval of PUD's number, number one's request for EDI funding in the amount of 1.6 million as recommended by the EDI Board in support of the Granville, excuse me, Grandview-Northgate Water Supply Pipeline Project as a loan in the amount of $800,000 and a grant in the amount of 8,000, or $800,000, AB 2018-169, approved in Committee 3, 0, so moved.
Has been moved, approved by the committee and moved. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. You can go home, Steve.
Nice haircut too. I liked it.
All right.
Should have asked a question.
Got that little zoom. Did you notice?
What, at lunch?
I like my husband getting this haircut like that.
All right, next up is...
Because he was here today.
Order please. The next item up is request confirmation of the county executive's reappointment of Georgine and Dustin and Shirley Fosloff and Joan Fortune to the Northwest Senior Services Board.
Move to confirm?
Donovan moves to confirm. Does, so a second, Mr. Bird, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. Next item up is request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Colin Van Slike to the Development Standards Technical Advisory Committee, AB 2018-176. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move confirmation.
Second.
Mr. Buchanan moves confirmation. Mr. Donovan, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. There's no additional introduction items, correct?
I move approval.
Yep.
We have, Ms. Brenner has moved approval introduction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donovan, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of introducing these items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These pass six to zero with Mr. Sidhu excused. All right, committee reports. Finance Administrative Services, do you want to add anything else, Mr. Bird?
Nope.
Public Works, Ms. Brenner?
Yep, we had a discussion with Public Works staff to provide background of the upcoming Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee recommendation of the level of service for the Lummi Island Ferry system. And specifically, we asked in no uncertain terms if there was going to be any possibility of condemnation and they said no. So whatever we do will be what works with the committee, with the county, and with the, any, any affected property owners, if that happens.
Planning and development?
Oh, I'm sorry. And then there was also, there, there was a discussion, it's on for introduction tonight, of a proposed resolution authorizing use and establishing expenditure authority for Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District Tax Revenue Funds, phew, that's a mouthful, for Taiyi Drive Landscape Corridor Landscape Maintenance. It was, it's a little, it's not, it's not really landscape maintenance like flowers and this and that. It's, they gave us a chart that showed it's for the mowing and the keeping it, you know, so, so people can pass by there and do that in a safe way. So it's not really about doing the kind of thing to any extent like the garden club was doing up there, but it's, you know, it's, it's a maintenance issue for the road fund. I mean, for the road crew, I think. Maybe they hire somebody up there, but...
Planning and development?
We had a presentation today on updating the Lammard to allow for automotive repair in Point Roberts as well as manufacturing facilities around Lake Weiser.
Right, and on the special committee of the whole, we had, we had directed, provided direction on the comprehensive plan amendments, requested by council through resolution, resolution 2018-015 related to the Cherry Point Urban Growth Area. There was no decision taken, sorry, there were further clarification directions given to staff, but no vote on any changes to the comprehensive plan. Other items? Council member updates, Mr. Buchanan?
Nothing.
Mr. Baloo?
Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes. No, it's not update. Since cameras are going, I want to make sure that I apologize to Councilmember Brenner for questioning her motives.
Yeah, I accept your apology.
I, I don't know anybody who's more passionate and committed to dealing with, moving us forward on dealing with homelessness. And I look forward to working in committee with that coming forward, so I'm sorry.
Well done. Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, Sunday, it was a Sunday, it's, Sunday, my husband and I drove down to Walker Valley to the ORV Park, ORV, ORV, yeah, the ORV Park. And if you haven't done it, it's worth the trip. It took us a little bit less than an hour and it was so worth it. But I will say, and, and it's an incredible park. And I guess online somewhere, maybe I could send it to you. My husband sent that stuff to me. They've got these people who put on the camera on, and then they, and all these stories that go with it and it was really, it was really fun to watch. I, problem is, there's so many of them and I really got caught up in it, so pretty soon it was hours later. It is amazing. The one thing that occurred to me, and this was on a Sunday when you'd expect a lot of people and there were, I couldn't see anybody from DNR anywhere. And we probably, I mean, I consider my car sort of an off-road vehicle because it's got four-wheel, all-wheel drive and all that stuff, but I'm not sure that's what they intended and nobody said anything to us. So I'm a little concerned that there's not a lot of enforcement people and who would do the enforcement, but it is a magnificent park. Definitely worth going down there or at least, I'll send you the, the link, yeah.
Mr. Bird? My only comment is, of course, recently, it was Memorial Day and it just brought back to me my visit on the 100th year anniversary of Gallipoli. I went, I went to the beach where my grandfather landed at Gallipoli exactly 100 years to the minute of when they all landed on the beach. It was a very moving experience, which is why I'm wearing the poppy. With that, if there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you.